Good afternoon, I will call to order this meeting of the Santa Barbara City Council. Today is April 7th, 2020, and we'll start with our Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ms. Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Yes, Councilmember Jordan.
Present.
Councilmember Alejandro Gutierrez.
Present.
Mayor Potem Sneddon.
Present.
Present.
Councilmember Friedman.
Present.
Councilmember Harmon.
Present.
Councilmember Oscar Gutierrez.
Present.
And Mayor Mario.
Here, thank you very much. I'd like to start by thanking the public for adjusting to this new way of conducting a public meeting. I'd also like to thank our staff, our IT and city TV staff and our consultants have helped us put together these procedures. Thank you all. For the public, please go to our website, santabarbara.ca.gov, to learn how to call in and make public comment during our meeting. As your mayor, I would like to reassure our residents and all the good people in our region that the city of Santa Barbara is continuing to provide vital municipal services to the public. These include public safety, water and wastewater services, and some community development functions. The, um, our Public Works employees are maintaining our streets, our many facilities, and all of our public spaces. For now, our beaches and parks are open with some limitations. And of course, we ask that when you are in public spaces, please adhere to strict physical distancing practices and wear a face covering for your added protection and for the people around you. The COVID-19 pandemic has created extraordinary circumstances, and I acknowledge the stress you must be under and how hard you're working to stay home and to take special care when you have to leave your house. We are depending on you to do your part to protect the public health. Our city council and city government officials are working collaboratively with the county of Santa Barbara and its public health department. County Public Health is the lead agency responding to the coronavirus emergency, and we appreciate their hard work these last few weeks and months. You can go to publichealthsbc.org to watch live or watch recorded videos of public health's press conferences. Also, lots of good information to be read there on that website. Your government leaders are dedicated to your health and safety. Your mayor and city council are on-call 24/7. As your mayor, nothing is more important to me than getting this city through this emergency. I want to help our families maintain a sense of peace and security, and I want to support our businesses, nonprofits, and institutions. I want to help them bounce back and get things back to normal when the virus has passed. We're in this together. The city of Santa Barbara is standing strong for you and your family. So I'm going to go through a couple of housekeeping instructions. When we go to public comment, every speaker will get three minutes to make remarks, and we will not allow people to pull their time or donate their time to another speaker, as is our practice under normal circumstances. We'll go back to that when we can. Also, if you can time yourself wherever you're calling from, that would be helpful. It's hard to cut people off, but we will be keeping time here in chambers. And another point, when the city council takes a vote, we will do so through roll call votes. That's what we have to do when people are coming in from remote locations. And we've practiced these electronic procedures and hope everything goes smoothly, but if not, we ask for everyone's patience. So, thank you. Ms. Clerk, do you have further instructions related to public participation? Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, for members of the public, I see that a number of you have called in already, which is terrific. There is a raise-your-hand functionality on the software, on the GoToWebinar software. When the mayor calls the item you wish to speak on, please raise your hand. So if you would like to speak on item 18, when the mayor calls item 18, you would click Raise Your Hand. Then when we get to the public comment portion of that item, I will review everyone who has raised their hand, and we will take them in the order that appears here in the software. I will call on you. I will ask you to mute your TV or your computer if you're watching the meeting. I will then unmute you. You will say your name. You will have your three minutes to speak, and then I'll go ahead and mute you again. So remember, use that raise-your-hand functionality when we get to the item you want to speak on. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor.
Ms. Gorman, we'll go to our first item. It's a ceremonial item. Number one, please.
Item one, National Poetry Month, April 2020.
This is a proclamation for National Poetry Month, whereas the city of Santa Barbara is widely recognized as an arts nexus, providing a spiritual home for diverse, talented culture of writers, readers, and speakers who seek to reflect and expand upon our understanding and compassion for ourselves and each other. And whereas since 1996, the Academy of American Poets has designated April as National Poetry Month to highlight the extraordinary achievements and ongoing legacy of American poets and increase the visibility, presence, and accessibility of poetry in our community. And whereas the city of Santa Barbara, recognizing of the value of poetry, established a poet laureate position in 2005 to honor local literary excellence and the spoken word by utilizing poetry to celebrate and elevate community. And whereas current Santa Barbara poet laureate Lauren Basilar, past poet's laureate, our Office of Arts and Culture, local educators, and the Santa Barbara Public Library system continue to steward appreciation of the written word in our community. And whereas the city of Santa Barbara recognizes the talent and hard work of local high school students in the 2020 Poetry Out Loud Recitation Competition, demonstrating excellence in public speaking and performance. So therefore, I, Kathy Mario, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Santa Barbara, California, do hereby proclaim April as National Poetry Month in Santa Barbara. So Ms. Clerk, usually we have someone say a few words. Do we have that today?
Yes, Madam Mayor, we have Ms. Basilar. Ms. Basilar, I am going to unmute you at that point. You may say your name and make your remarks. And make sure you unmute yourself before you speak.
Yes, I'm unmuted. Can you hear me?
We can. You're good to go. Go ahead. Perfect.
Wonderful. Um, can I just take the first few seconds to thank you all? Because you've been thanking a lot of people, but we need to thank you all for your efforts and probably extremely stressful work that you have right now to keep our beautiful city going. So, thank you very, very much, dear city council members and Madam Mayor. I'm not going to take much of your time, but I would like you to know that poetry is going on very strongly here in Santa Barbara. We now have a reading series where every day a poet from Santa Barbara has recorded their favorite poem and is reading it, and every day you can see a different Santa Barbara poet read it on YouTube. So, poetry is going on. And the only thing I'd like to do now is to read a poem to you by the current poet laureate of Santa Cruz. And the reason why I want to read it, first, it's much shorter than what I write, and second, somehow it resonates with so much that is going on with us right now. But it also resonates with goodness and kindness and people helping one another. And I think that's what our beautiful city is doing right now, is everybody's trying to help everybody. And by the way, I'm in a group of 12 women, and we are making masks all day long, sewing masks to help the veterinarians and first responders, and also the people who clean the hospitals. They don't get masks, so we are sewing masks for them. Here is the poem I wanted to read to you, and again, thank you so much. It's called "Small Kindnesses." I have been thinking about the way, when you walk down a crowded aisle, people pull in their legs to let you pass by, or how strangers still say "bless you" when somebody sneezes. "Don't die," we are saying. And sometimes, when you spill lemons from your grocery bag, someone else will help you pick them up. Mostly, we don't want to harm each other. We want to be handed our cup of coffee hot and to say thank you to the person handing it, and to smile at them for them to smile back, and for the waitress to call us honey when she sets down the bowl of clam chowder, and for the driver in the red pickup to let us pass. We have so little of each other now. We are so far from tribe and fire, only these brief moments of exchange. But what if they are the true dwelling of the holy, these fleeting temples we make together when we say, "Here, have my seat," or "Go ahead, you first," or "I love your hat"? Thank you very much, Madam Mayor, and dear city council members.
Thank you, Ms. Basilar, Madam Poet Laureate. We needed that today. Thank you so much.
Good. Good. Thank you. Goodbye.
Okay.
Bye-bye.
And we'll go to item number two. Ms. Clerk, for those of you, Ms. Gorman and I are in the chambers together, so you'll see us sort of looking at each other. Number two?
Yes, item two, DMV Donate Life Month, April 2020.
This is a proclamation celebrating DMV Donate Life Month. Whereas organ, tissue, marrow, and blood donation are life-giving acts recognized worldwide as expressions of compassion to those in need. Whereas more than 112,000 individuals nationwide and more than 21,000 in California are on the national organ transplant waiting list, whereby the need for donated organs is especially urgent in Hispanic and African-American communities, with about 17 deaths daily due to the shortage of donated organs. Whereas more than 600,000 units of blood per year are needed to meet the need in California, and at any given time, 18,000 patients are in need of volunteer marrow donors. Whereas a single individual's donation of the heart, lungs, liver, kidneys, pancreas, and small intestine can save up to eight lives, donation of tissue can save and heal the lives of more than 75 others, and a single blood donation can help three people in need. Whereas millions of lives each year are saved and healed by donors of organs, tissues, marrow, and blood, and the spirit of giving and decision to donate are not restricted by age or medical condition. Whereas more than 16 million Californians have signed up with the state-authorized Donate Life California donor registry to ensure their wishes to be organ eye and tissue donors are honored. And California residents can sign up with the Donate Life California donor registry when applying for or renewing their driver's licenses or ID cards at the California Department of Motor Vehicles. Now, therefore, I, Mayor Mario, by virtue of the authority vested in me, do hereby proclaim April 2020 as DMV Donate Life California and urge all residents to understand and exercise their right to celebrate DMV Donate Life. Go ahead, Ms. Clerk.
Madam Mayor and Council, we do have one person here to accept this proclamation. That is Scott Burns. Mr. Burns, I am going to unmute you in a moment. Please make sure that you have muted your TV or your computer where you are watching the meeting. I will unmute you. Then you may go ahead and make your comments. Please say your name, and then make your comments. Go ahead now, sir.
Hello, I'm Scott Burns. Thank you. Mayor Mario, Kathy, thank you for the proclamation from myself and about the 120 people in Santa Barbara County that are on the waiting list for an organ transplant. My kidney transplant was about five years ago, and we have a few new council members, so I'll give a brief rundown of it and also to give us a break from the pandemic. Memorial Day, 2015, I'm sitting on a friend's sailboat at Fries Harbor, Santa Cruz Island, about 4:00 PM. The Santa Barbara Harbor Patrol pulls up behind the boat. The patrolman yells, "Mr. Burns, we have a kidney for you." I get in my gear, dinging over to the patrol boat. Two things: they didn't have a kidney, but they knew where one was. Second, it's about five hours sailing to Santa Cruz Island, but only 45 minutes back in that fast patrol boat. I went home. Lisa and I drove down to Cedar Side Eye Hospital. After running checks to make sure the kidney was a match, had the transplant early the next morning. By 11:30, I was awake and urinating using the new kidney. My first phone call was to the Harbor Patrol, thanking them. For the rest of the story, Vivian Butel, my donor, was a nurse at Cottage Hospital. She had collapsed at her gym and was taken to Cottage. They think, they thought she had a stroke. It turned out she had a brain aneurysm. She wasn't going to live, and her family, knowing that she had a pink dot on her driver's license, said proceed. There's a waiting list about seven years long in Southern California, and I'd been on the waiting list for three years for an organ transplant. But the Donate Life people asked if the family, if anyone knew, if they knew anyone who needed a transplant. With about 40, with about 480,000 people in the county and 120 on the waiting list, it doesn't happen often. But Vivian's sister-in-law knew that Lisa's husband needed a kidney, so was bumped to the top of the list. I was told that a picture of me placed next to her casket the following weekend was the only high point of Vivian's funeral. She was 41 years old. I've gotten to know Vivian's family. We meet at the Donate Life float before the Rose Bowl Parade. And every September, the weekend after Labor Day, we sponsor a barbeque at Leadbetter Beach to honor Vivian and others as we celebrate organ donations. Since the DMV has closed, if anyone would want to sign up to be an organ donor online, just Google Donate Life, and you'll find a California website. Mayor, thank you again. And when this pandemic is over, I'll come during public comments and give you another thank you in person. Scott.
We look forward to that, Mr. Burns. Thanks. Ms. Clerk, we have a third ceremonial item.
Yes, Madam Mayor, we have a third ceremonial item, and that is Employee Recognition Service Award Pins.
Mr. Paul Casey, our city administrator?
Yes, good afternoon, Madam Mayor and council members. As you know, each month I like to come to council and honor and recognize employees for achieving certain milestones in their service with the city. And so I would like to name some names on those milestones. There's no one who's going to receive their pin in person today. They'll come at a later meeting to honor them. With five years of service to the city, Nancy Mokti Zuma, Accounting Assistant, Finance Department; Maricela Torres, Human Resources Assistant, Human Resources Department; Anthony Tornello, Police Officer, Police Department; Gareth Newman, Police Officer, Police Department; Brittany Roers, Police Officer, Police Department; Kristen Kim, Police Officer, Police Department; Mehdi Musavian, Project Engineer, Public Works Department; Jesus Bonuelos, Project Engineer II, Public Works Department; Kristen Bane, Tree Trimmer II, Parks and Recreation Department; and Anthony Lombardi, Harbor Patrol Officer with the Waterfront Department. With 15 years of service to the city, Doug Costin, Waterfront Maintenance Crew Leader, Waterfront Department; and with 30 years of service to the city, James McCoy, Fire Battalion Chief, Fire Department; and Robert Mercado, Fire Battalion Chief, Fire Department. Thank you.
So, Mr. Casey, we think that these employees might join us when they can come back into chambers. I hope so.
Yes, I think the 30-year recipients from the Fire Department would like to at a later time.
Okay, I thank these employees and congratulate them for their years of service. Ms. Clerk, we think a member of the public wanted to speak on one of these early items. You got a raise-your-hand notification. Go ahead, please.
Madam Mayor, yes, we have a raise-your-hand indication from Ms. Anna Marie Gott. Ms. Gott, I will unmute you in a moment, and if you could please clarify, if you did want to speak on one of those ceremonial items, please let us know. If not, let us know that you can raise your hand at a later time. So please mute whatever you are watching. Go ahead, state your name, see if it's for one of these items, and if so, please make your presentation. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, go ahead. You know what? I jumped the gun on my raising my hands.
Nope, nope.
But I did want to let you know that there are two hands raised for me because I had problems making public comment yesterday at the planning commission. So I don't know which op is the best to use for public comment, general public comment.
Ms. Gott, if you're here for general public comment, you can raise your hand there. And if you don't, then I will make a note to call on you, even if that's not, because you let us know.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'm muting you now.
Okay, then we'll go on to changes to the agenda. Mr. Casey changes?
There are none, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. So now we'll go to open public comment. This is the public's opportunity to speak to us on items that are not on our formal agenda. And you have three minutes. And be sure to time yourself if you can, wherever you are. That would be helpful to us, and I'm running a clock here. Ms. Clerk, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council members. At this point, we have two individuals who have raised their hand for public comment, and that's Ms. Gott, I'm sorry, and Ms. Van Dyke, Ms. Trujillo, Ms. Lindbeck. So I will go and Mr. Lopez and Ms. Hirschberg. Okay, I will call your name before I call on each of you. Remember to mute your TV or your computer if you're watching it. Unmute your microphone. If you had been muted, please state your name, and you have three minutes. We'll be timing you. All right, Ms. Gott, we'll start with you. You're unmuted. You... Let's see, see if I can unmute you. Okay, Ms. Gott, go ahead.
Ms. Gott, go ahead. Can you?
Hello?
Go ahead.
Good afternoon, council members. I wanted to just go over the governors. You know what? I'm getting back talk on this. I can't mute this because I'm on my phone.
We can hear you. Fine. Go ahead.
I'm on my computer now. This is not great. Hello? Hello?
Ms. Gott, we can hear you. Fine. Go ahead.
Well, this is wonderful.
Will you be making your comments, then? We can go to the next speaker and come back to Ms. Gott if she calls back. Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Barbara Cronin-Hirschberg. Ms. Hirschberg, same thing. Please unmute your phone or your computer audio, and please mute your TV, however you're watching the meeting. You will have three minutes. Go ahead now.
Good afternoon. I'm Barbara Cronin-Hirschberg, and I am president of the Santa Barbara Library, Friends of the Library. And I just wanted to take my three minutes to commend the staff and the director for all of the work that they're doing while the library is closed. I feel that the staff is like beyond inventive. If you go to their website, it's phenomenal, the things that are available to this community, all of them for free. There is movies, there is books, there is presentations, there is Youtubes. There is even a phone number where you can call in and actually talk to a librarian. And they recently were distributing books by handing them out to people, and of course, we know where that is now. But now they started a program where you can actually mail a limited amount of books to library card owners. So I just, you know, want to talk about something happy and wonderful, and I'm just so proud of all they're doing. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to the next speaker.
Madam Mayor and Council, our next speaker is Lauren Trujillo. I see that Lauren Trujillo may have had her hand raised before a general public comment, so let's check in with Mr. Trujillo and see if she wanted to speak on one of the ceremonial items or on this general public comment. Mr. Trujillo, please unmute yourself and mute whoever you are using to watch the meeting, and go ahead now.
Hello. Yes, I wanted to speak on public comments. Can you all hear me? Okay, great. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and members. Same as Lauren Trujillo, and I'm the Foundation Director of the Santa Barbara Public Library Foundation. Given these trying and things at times, it's always nice to hear some good news, so I want to continue echoing what Barbara Hirschberg shared. The Santa Barbara Public Library, like in other Santa Barbara emergencies, has been a second responder for the community right now. Our students are at home learning, and the digital divide is more prevalent than ever. The library is stepping up at this time to provide our community, parents, and caregivers the resources they need, and they are working to create new innovative ways to reach our most at-risk students. I'll share a few things to, again, echo what Barbara shared. The Santa Barbara Public Library is offering extended checkouts, virtual book clubs, how-to videos on applying for unemployment in Spanish, virtual storytimes, virtual book clubs, poetry readings on the library YouTube channel, as the poet laureate shared. Curating, they're curating home science and technology kits for parents, and they've checked out Wi-Fi hotspots to help those kids at home who don't have great Wi-Fi connections. They've created video challenges for teens, and they're working with Women's Economic Ventures to offer consultations to small business owners impacted by closures. And then last but not least, the Santa Barbara Public Library SBPL Delivers Program, which is proudly funded by the Santa Barbara Public Library Foundation and has received over 1,000 checkouts or requests in this time that the program's been established. So incredible things happening at the library for the community at this time. And the library is a vital resource for our community now and will be a vital resource for the community as we begin to think about recovery. I hope we will all remember how the library has continued to serve the community during this crisis and consider the necessities when we are ready to rebuild. Libraries are one of the first city services to be cut, and we must understand how these very services will be needed more than ever to bring our community together and reconstruct our education system. So please continue to stay safe, healthy, and look to the Santa Barbara Public Library for resources at this time. Thank you.
Very good. Ms. Clerk, next speaker?
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is David Lopez. David Lopez, I am going to unmute you. Please make sure that you have unmuted yourself and that you've turned off the volume on your TV or computer, however you're watching the meeting. Please go ahead, state your name and make your comment. You have three minutes. Please go ahead, state your name and make your comment. You have three minutes. You're unmuted. Go ahead.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Ms. Madam Mayor. I'm a local fishing boat captain, and I sent a comment to all council members recently asking you to consider opening the closure of the boat ramp. And right now, probably it's open just to commercial fishing boats and to have, who are slipholders. And they can use the ramp on an appointment-only basis. And I'd... That you consider opening it for folks like myself. My wife and I are both retired, and we use our boat here for subsistence to fill our boat with fish that we catch. And we'd like you to consider opening the harbor on the same basis that you have it open now for slipholders and commercial fishing boats. And that would be to let us follow the same process and make an appointment to launch. And you could even include... We'd be willing to rent a visitor slip when we launch the boat and keep the boat in the harbor for the days that we'd be allowed to use a visitor slip. That also provides income to the harbor. But I went down and observed what the harbor staff is doing with the process they're using right now, and I think it's excellent. It does maintain social distancing, just kind of the same way that, you know, local markets and other business establishments that are open, the way they put lines on the floor, and they keep patrons early distanced so that we are doing our part to not spread the virus. And I think we, I think the process you're using down at the harbor right now at the boat ramp is doing that. It was very well-run, organized. I watched several commercial guys bring their boats in on others. And it was very orderly and no crowding. And I think we could do the same thing by adding in subsistence fishermen. And I recognize that the staff is, the Harbor Master's Office is probably reduced right now because of the current conditions. So, whatever, you know, you would only, I'd only be asking that you consider doing this based on what the staff can handle down there. So, it might be not very many, but that's my suggestion. And I appreciate the opportunity to present it to you. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you for that comment. And I will ask Mr. Casey to address that when we have our coronavirus update later on in the agenda. We'll go to the next public speaker, please.
Our next public speaker is Kimmy Van Dyke. Ms. Van Dyke, please turn down your TV or however you're watching the meeting. Please unmute yourself. I will unmute you. Please state your name, and you have three minutes. Go ahead. You're on.
Good afternoon. Can you hear me okay? Thank you. My name is Kimmy Van Dyke, and I'm with 5G Free Santa Barbara. We'd, I'm here to talk about the deployment of wireless infrastructure during quarantine and how it can be stopped legally. Here's how. Since the beginning of the quarantine, there has been an overwhelming number of reports from concerned citizens and parents who have been witnessing the aggressive expansion of cellular antenna installations in communities across the country. The vast majority of this activity is occurring without the knowledge or consent of our residents and is without local government oversight, application approval, public noticing, community participation, environmental review, and most importantly, transparency. Clearly, the telecom companies are using the COVID-19 emergency as cover to expand and cement their rapid and virtually unsupervised deployment of harmful wireless infrastructure and to advance their agenda. To stop this activity and as part of our promise to be proactive and solutions-oriented with our efforts, 5G Free Santa Barbara is coming to you now and act a moratorium. Following the Homeland Security and the FCC orders, local authorities have emergency powers to place a moratorium on nonessential activity, including to pause all pending wireless zoning and right-of-way applications and to shut down new wireless construction. We have a letter that we will submit for the record. I will read part of it, and my counterpart and colleague Miriam Lindbeck will finish off where I end. Dear Mayor and City Councilmember 5G Free Santa Barbara asks that you impose a moratorium on small cells and other wireless infrastructure permits process and deployment until the COVID-19 emergency is over. The wireless providers are using the COVID-19 emergency as cover to expand and cement their rapid and virtually unsupervised deployment of harmless wireless infrastructure. The local leaders and staff should not have to dedicate time and resources to policing whether the wireless companies are following local and state law. They have far more important things to do. The FCC wireless permit rules allow emergency moratoria. Homeland Security Guidelines emphasize that maintenance of existing communications capability is the priority. New construction is not essential. The COVID-19 emergency has led to a government shutdown of nonessential activity. Hospitals, emergency response, and local officials are overwhelmed, and they must be allowed to focus on what is indeed essential. Now is not the time to be dictating, dedicating resources to expanding rather than just maintaining our networks.
Your time is up.
Join our email list and Facebook page. Thank you.
Your time is up, yeah.
Madam Mayor and Council, our next public speaker is Miriam Lindbeck. Ms. Lindbeck, please go ahead and mute your phone. I'm sorry, unmute your phone, mute your TV or however you're watching this meeting. You will have three minutes. Please state your name and then make your statement. Go ahead. You're on now, Ms. Lindbeck.
Thank you so much, and good afternoon, Mayor Maria and Sarah. I am Miriam Lindbeck of the 5G Free Santa Barbara delegation. And to continue with this letter, the FCC has directly held a local jurisdiction can impose a temporary halt to deployment and permits during emergencies. In the matter of accelerating wireline broadband deployment by removing barriers, FCC 18111, 33 FCC RCD 7705, 7784-7785, Paragraph 157 in 2018, says, "We recognize that there may be limited situations in the case of a natural disaster or other comparable emergency where an express or de facto moratoria that violates Section 253A may nonetheless be necessary to protect the public safety and welfare or to ensure the continued quality of telecommunications services." Homeland Security has declared that local governments is on the forefront and can take control over determining whether to temporarily halt all nonessential activity. Homeland Security Guidance Documents prioritize maintenance of existing communication systems and do not support essential status for new construction. So, we will send you links that the Homeland Security, Cybersecurity, and Infrastructure Security Agency, which identifies critical infrastructure during COVID-19. We will send all of those to you via email. And we will close by saying Homeland Security, like the FCC, understands that it is an essential, it is essential in an emergency situation to justify focusing on protecting, responding, recovering, and restoring existing systems. But new communications, facilities, construction is and should be deemed nonessential and subject to lockdown for as long as we are under emergency conditions. Santa Barbara can and should impose a moratorium on deployment in our local areas and freeze the permit process until the COVID-19 emergency is over. Sincerely and in all due respect, 5G Free Santa Barbara. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Lindbeck. Next speaker?
Okay, I don't believe we have any additional public comment speakers. If anyone else wanted to speak on public comment, please use the raise-your-hand functionality. Ah, Ms. Gott, I believe Ms. Gott is ready. Perfect. All right, Ms. Gott, I will unmute you. Please make sure that you have unmuted your phone and that you've muted all the devices on which you were watching the meeting. Go ahead.
Good afternoon. I hope you can hear me now. I had actually logged on twice because I attended the Planning Commission meeting yesterday. And I understand that there were substantial issues with anyone being able to listen to my public comment. The, so I tried logging in by my phone as well as my computer today and did experience, obviously, some problems. The reason that I actually am calling in today is really about an email that I had sent earlier last week. And that is really about the government order with regards to how public meetings are going to be handled. And I just wanted to read something to you. And I also sent an email to you just before this meeting, you know, just letting you know Board of Supervisors does allow people to call in for public comment. And as you were aware before, in one of our last city council meetings, people called in and someone called them back so that they could go ahead and make public comment at the appropriate time. And it worked beautifully. But right now, no one is able to actually call in and have that actually accomplished for this or any other meeting. Right now, with the city, because you are requiring everyone to use GoToWebinar. The, the order actually says a legislative body or a state body is authorized to public meetings via teleconferencing and to, or other electronic. So, I'm looking at it right now. Obviously, I am doing all of this electronically. Then it goes on to say, "All members of the public seeking to observe and to address." So, if someone is not, if someone is watching this on TV, they actually cannot address any of you by public comment because they don't have a computer to actually call in with their headsets and actually make a public comment. And anyone who doesn't have a computer at home, you know, or internet access obviously cannot do any of those things. And we have a substantial portion of the residents of the city of Santa Barbara that cannot make a public comment because they don't have internet access, let alone a headset to be able to use in some cases. So, I think that what is happening here is we're disenfranchising a whole bunch of people from being able to even participate in public comment. And I think it's a real disservice because this issue with the coronavirus is going to last for a substantial period of time. We really need to allow individuals to call in through a landline phone to be able to make a public comment. And I think the city council really needs to ensure that this can happen. It is possible for GoToWebinar.
Thanks so much, Ms. Gott. Your time is up. You made your point, and that is something that we'll consider. Thanks. Your time is up. And so, that's the end of the public comment, then. Do you see anyone else?
Madam Mayor and council members, I do not see anyone else. Anyone else wanted to speak for public comment, please raise your hand right now. I'm not seeing anyone. We're done with public comment.
Okay, we'll close public comment, and we'll go to our consent calendar. Ms. Clerk, do you have items to read?
I do, and actually, it's quite a few, so everyone can settle in. Item five, dissolution of Santa Barbara's sister-city relationship with Dingle, Ireland. Recommendation to council adopt by reading of title only a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara, California dissolving the sister-city affiliation with the City of Dingle, Ireland. Item six, resolution identifying fiscal year 2020 through 21, projects to be funded by Senate Bill 1, the Road Repair and Accountability Act. Recommendation to council adopt by reading of title only a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara, adopting a list of projects for fiscal year 2020 through 2021, funded by Senate Bill 1, the Road Repair and Accountability Act. Item seven, annual authorization for the allocation for the City's Share Transportation Development Act funds for bicycle and pedestrian projects. Recommendation to council adopt by reading of title only a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara, authorizing the filing of a claim with the Santa Barbara County Association of Governments for allocation of $80,221 in Transportation Development Act funds for fiscal year 2021. Item eight, acceptance of grant from the California State Library to expand the Stay and Play Pilot Project to support early learning and adoption of a resolution amending Resolution 19041. Recommendation to council, A, authorize the library director to accept a $249,792 grant from the California State Library to expand the Stay and Play Pilot Project to support early learning in the community. B, authorize an increase in appropriations and estimated revenues of $249,792 in the library department's miscellaneous grant fund, which will entirely fund the project, including the new limited appointment position. And C, adopt by reading of title only a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara amending Resolution Number 19041, Position and Salary Control Resolution for fiscal year 2020 affecting the library department effective March 28, 2020. Item nine, resolution delegating to the city engineer the authority to approve plans and specifications for construction or improvement projects. Recommendation to council adopt by reading of title only a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara delegating to the city engineer discretionary authority to approve the plan or design for construction of or improvement to city property and requiring the submittal to the city engineer of all plans and specifications for construction of or improvement to city property. And last one, 10, resolution denying the appeal of Victoria Veyant to reverse the Architectural Board of Review's decision to grant project design approval for the project at 601 Alameda Pottery, Sarah. Recommendation to council adopt by reading of title only a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara, denying the appeal of Victoria Veyant to reverse the December 2, 2019 decision of the Architectural Board of Review granting project design approval for the project at 601 Alameda Pottery, Sarah.
Let's take a vote on item number 10 because during the appeal, it was not a unanimous vote. And this way, city council members can stay consistent with their votes as this is a second reading. So, do I have a motion, Mr. Jordan, to put this forward?
Madam Mayor, I'll move approval of item 10.
Mr. Friedman?
I'll second it.
I don't see any, so Ms. Clerk, if you'll do a roll call on item 10.
Yes, Madam Mayor and Council, this is a roll call on item 10. We have a motion by Councilmember Jordan to approve the recommended action and seconded by Councilmember Friedman. Councilmember Jordan?
Aye.
Councilmember Alejandro Gutierrez?
I want to uphold the appeal. So, it would be no?
So, your vote is no?
No.
Thank you. Mayor Potem Sneddon?
No.
Councilmember Friedman?
Yes.
Councilmember Harmon?
Yes.
Councilmember Oscar Gutierrez?
No.
And Mayor Maria?
Aye. So, that passes four to three along the lines of the original vote. Thank you, everybody. Mr. Jordan, you had another comment?
I will also move the balance of the consent calendar.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any comment on the rest? On the consent calendar, if there's no other objection, we'll wait for their reading, and we'll go to a roll call vote to move the rest of the consent calendar forward.
Very good. This was a motion by Councilmember Jordan, and I'm confirming a second by Councilmember Harmon for the balance of the consent calendar. Thank you. Okay. Councilmember Alejandro Gutierrez?
Could you repeat that again? It was breaking up.
Absolutely. This is a motion by Councilmember Jordan, seconded by Councilmember Harmon for the balance of the consent calendar, the whole consent calendar except for item 10. And this is the roll call vote on that.
Yes.
Very good. Mayor Potem Sneddon?
Yes.
Councilmember Friedman?
Yes.
Councilmember Harmon?
Yes.
Councilmember Oscar Gutierrez?
Aye.
Councilmember Jordan?
Aye.
And Mayor Maria?
Aye. That looked unanimous. Okay, great. Thank you, everybody. And that concludes the consent calendar, and we'll move on to our first public hearing, which is number 17. Ms. Gorman, you've got a lot going on. Ms. Gorman, you've got a lot going on over there, but whenever you're ready to read that item.
Very good. Item 17, public hearing for five-year consolidated plan for use of federal community development block grant and home funds.
Okay, and we have a staff person who will give us this, uh, report. Mr. Casey, are we starting with you, or are we starting with Ms., Ms., Mr. Casey?
Uh, good afternoon, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. Uh, Ms. Elizabeth Stotts will give the presentation.
Okay, whenever we're ready. Can you hear me okay?
We're ready, Ms. Stotts, and we can hear you. Thanks.
Great. So, thank you. Good afternoon. Um, so I'm here to talk about the, uh, consolidated plan for CDVG and Home Fund. Uh, I'm the administrator of both the programs. So I can answer any questions that you may have on this. I just want to remind you that this is only a public hearing and we're asking for no, uh, action from council today. Next slide, thank you. So I'll start this discussion with a little bit, uh, if an introduction into the two programs. Uh, the purpose of the CDVG program is, uh, to make federal funds available, uh, to communities so that we can provide decent and affordable housing, a suitable living environment, and economic opportunities. Uh, these funds have to be used to, uh, help persons with low and moderate incomes. Next slide. The purpose of the home program is to help develop and rehabilitate affordable housing for low and moderate income households and to provide tenant-based rental assistance to individuals. Next slide. HUD mandates that every five years, uh, jurisdictions that receive this, these funds, uh, conduct a study of their housing and community development needs. Um, and as well as the needs of the special populations that HUD defines as, uh, the elderly, persons with disabilities, homeless individuals, and a few others that I'll outline later. Next slide. Uh, the results of the study will help, uh, the city develop priorities with these funds for the next five years. So during this upcoming consolidated plan period, uh, spans the fiscal years 2020 through 2024, uh, we anticipate receiving $4.5 million in CDVG and about $2.6 million in home funds. Next slide. The city hired, uh, Root Policy Research, uh, out of Denver. Uh, they're a firm that has a lot of experience conducting, uh, consolidated plans around the country. They, uh, did the Santa Barbara County Consolidated Plan, uh, five years ago. So they underwent through, uh, both of the work and the research on our behalf, and we facilitated and participated in discussions. They underwent through a thorough effort to solicit, uh, citizen participation, which is required with federal funding, or federal guidelines. Uh, one such guideline is to consult with a specific resident and population. So to that effect, we had three focus groups with, one of them was with persons with disabilities, and that was held at the Westside Community Center, and this meeting was facilitated with the assistance of the Independent Living National Center. Uh, another hearing was held with, uh, Spanish-speaking residents at Franklin Center, and this was coordinated with assistance from the community services staff at the Parks and Immigration Department. Uh, and a third meeting was held with persons experiencing homelessness at Alameda Park, and this meeting was coordinated with staff, uh, from PATH, S.B. Act, and Home for Good. Meetings were also held with stakeholders, um, and organizations that serve these, uh, populations. Uh, the groups that, uh, we have to focus on are people, are organizations that serve, uh, people in homelessness, housing, public services, uh, neighboring jurisdictions, and economic development programs. So an example of some of the organizations that participated in these stakeholder meetings included the Housing Authority, the County of Santa Barbara, Women's Economic Ventures, People's Self-Help Housing, and Transition House. We also disseminated a, uh, a housing survey, a residence survey through our communication networks, uh, including, um, the city's social media page and the city newsletter, and it got us 500, more than 500 responses, which, uh, we thought was great. The consolidated plan requires an analysis of specific criteria, uh, which I'll describe, uh, a little bit of each one. One criteria is, uh, housing. So using census data and housing data provided by HUD, uh, we look at the availability of housing, uh, the cost to rent or to purchase housing, the age of the housing stock. Another criteria is to look at the households with disproportionately greater needs. So this looks at whether certain age, uh, racial groups or income groups experience a higher, uh, rate of, uh, housing needs compared to other groups. The third criteria is, uh, the need for public housing. So this looks at the number of public housing units we have available, the number of Section Eight vouchers that are available, and the waitlist to receive, uh, public housing assistance. Next slide. Uh, the next criteria is to look at people experiencing homelessness. So we look at the, uh, the number, the point in time count numbers for a number of homeless people, uh, the number of people that are sheltered versus unsheltered. Uh, we looked at the need of special populations. So we looked at the number of elderly persons, uh, individuals with disabilities, uh, the needs of, uh, victims of domestic violence, and, and persons living with HIV or AIDS. And we looked at the availability of resources for these groups. And finally, we looked at the needs of our community facilities such as parks, streets, sidewalks, and community centers. Next slide. So the needs assessment found that, uh, the city, during our last five-year, uh, consolidated plan, we, uh, were able to meet and in some criteria exceed our stated goals. Uh, we found that most of the challenges that we're facing are the same. Some of the highlights that, uh, we thought we should point out, uh, is the housing cost burden. And this was identified as the, the most prevalent housing crisis with, uh, 58% of city residents uh, that are low or moderate income are paying, uh, a severe cost burden. So this means that they spend more of half of their income in, in housing. Uh, during the last five-year plan, it was 54% of the population, so it's increased slightly. The 2019 point in time count, uh, identified 887 persons experiencing homelessness in the city. Countywide, we know that nearly half of those people are new, newly homeless. Uh, during the last point in time count, that number was 893 total, uh, homeless people in Santa Barbara. Uh, the top needs identified by community, uh, by the community were for public facilities and infrastructure. So that means repairing sidewalks, streetlights, and, uh, parks. And these were also identified by the community last time. So as a result of, uh, this needs analysis, the community and community input, uh, the five priority areas that we previously identified, uh, with our last con plan, we're, uh, keeping those unchanged. Uh, these priority areas are in line with, uh, the allowed uses of CDVG and home funds. The five priorities are here, and they're not in any order. Uh, the first priority is to support programs that serve homeless individuals, families, and victims of domestic violence. Uh, the second is, uh, continue working with local housing providers to identify and support rehabilitation for the construction of affordable housing and to continue providing funds for rental assistance programs. We will continue to support capital projects that improve community facilities and public infrastructure, and we'll continue to support self-employment and workforce training programs and provide, uh, small business loans to low and moderate income residents. And we'll continue to administer the very complex CDVG and home programs in accordance with, uh, their regulations, and that includes, uh, fair housing enforcement. Next slide. Each year, uh, the city is required to submit an annual action plan, and this tells HUD the types of activities that we plan on funding with CDVG and home funds during the upcoming year, and they're based on the priorities that we just identified. Uh, this action plan will be submitted, uh, at the same time as the consolidated plan. Uh, if, if there's any specific projects, um, that will be funded, this is just priority areas and types of projects we want to fund. If there's something that requires specific council approval, we will come to council for approval of a specific activity. Just wanted to make sure to clarify that. So the first funding area would be to use our, um, amount that we're allowed to use for public services of CDVG to provide, uh, grants to organizations like PATH, uh, Domestic Violence Solutions, Transition House, and New Beginning. To satisfy the need, uh, for assisting our, the homeless. And, uh, we'll discuss these, uh, particular projects for council approval at the next item after we're done this public hearing. The next funding area is to use home funds to provide housing providers with financial support to programs that provide assistance to individuals or, uh, to acquire, rehabilitate, or construct affordable housing. The next funding area is to use CDVG funds to continue operating the city's housing rehabilitation program to help affordable housing providers rehabilitate multi-unit housing. Uh, this program has been operating for decades, and it's, uh, funded with the lobbying loan funds, uh, from, uh, previous loans that are being paid back. So it's a continual program, and if any fund that comes in from this program has to be used exactly for rehabilitation. The next funding area will be, oops, sorry, next slide. Thank you. Uh, the next funding area will be to use CDVG funds to help rehabilitate, um, uh, public restrooms at the East Side Park, to install new, uh, playground equipment at the West Side Center, to help make, uh, improvements at the Louise Larry Davis Center, and to rehabilitate the restrooms at the Transition House Shelter for homeless families. And these specific activities require council approval at the next item. Um, the next funding priority area is to fund economic development projects, uh, specifically for organizations such as, uh, Women's Economic Ventures for their self-employment training programs, uh, which is also contingent upon council approval, and, uh, to continue providing small business loans for low-income individuals. And the final funding area is to fund the administration of the CDVG and home programs. Next slide. So the consolidated plan, uh, now is in a draft form and must be available for public inspection for 30 days. So a public hearing is required to be held, which we're doing today, and HUD issued guidance allowing us to hold a public hearing via web as we are doing so. So we're holding it before the public review period starts. It starts tomorrow, and it ends on May 8th. The full report is available at, on the city website at www dot Santa Barbara C A dot gov, and it'll be posted on the homepage so that it's easily accessible. Any public comments, uh, received, uh, today at the hearing and during the 30-day period will be incorporated into the final report, which will be back, uh, for council approval, for final council approval on May 12th. Next slide. And that concludes, uh, this presentation.
Okay, thanks, Ms. Stotts, and I'll go through the list of our city council members and ask them if they have questions. So Mr. Jordan, do you have a question?
No questions, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Alejandro Gutierrez, do you have a question?
No question, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Mayor Potem Sneddon, question?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have just a quick question on what the official definition of decent housing is. How is that defined?
Uh, usually, uh, sorry, Madam Mayor, uh, Councilmember Sneddon, usually that means, uh, it needs housing quality standards, uh, defined by HUD, that it's habitable. They, there is a list of housing criteria that, uh, I don't have it memorized, unfortunately.
All right. Thank you. Does any of it have to do with the cost of the housing?
Hmm, not sure. I understand the question. Is it to bring down the cost? Is that what you're asking?
Is it, if it's, it's, um, and I can ask you this later too, if, if the amount that the housing is being offered for, does that fit in the definition of decent or not?
No, I don't believe so. It's, and, uh, usually with our housing funds, we attach a affordability covenant to them, so they have to remain affordable.
Okay, understood. Thank you.
Mr. Friedman, question?
No questions, Madam Mayor.
Ms. Harmon, question?
No questions, Madam Mayor.
Thanks. Mr. Oscar Gutierrez?
No questions, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, are there public comment? Has anyone raised their hand to say anything about this item?
Madam Mayor and Councilmembers, no, and there are no indications that members of the public wish to speak on this item.
So it was informational sort of leading into the next item, correct, Ms. Stotts?
Uh, yes, Madam Mayor. It's, uh, this is a, uh, mandatory procedure that we're undergoing, and we're just kicking off the public, uh, review period for this document.
Okay.
And, and can be submitted anytime during the next 30 days. The report has my email address on the cover page. It's eastat@santabarbarystate.gov, so they can submit them to me, uh, in writing.
Very good. We've, um, conducted our public hearing, and we'll go on to the, uh, next item, which is number 18. Ms. Gorman?
Yes, number 18, Community Development and Human Services Committee recommendations for fiscal year 2021 for human services and community development block grant funds.
Mr. Casey, we'll just go right to Ms. Stotts, because I think she's the staff.
Correct, correct. Thank you.
Okay, I am back. So, um, I'm here today to present, uh, the funding recommendations for the Community Development Block Grant and Human Services Funding Recommendations, which does go hand in hand with our previous discussion. And I'll try to clarify as much as possible. I understand that it can get a bit confusing. And, and the way we're doing this today is, is quite different than what we're used to. So, uh, I'll first, uh, like, give you an explanation of, uh, the funding that we're talking about here. Uh, they come from two sources. In red, you'll see is, uh, general fund dollars that council committed in October to support programs that provide direct, uh, human services to low-income city residents. In blue is our, uh, CDVG allocation for the upcoming year. The amount shown in dark blue is the entitlement amount that we're receiving. The smaller, uh, shades of blue are, uh, program income repayments that we can allocate towards, uh, grants. And, uh, the small sliver, the $18,000, is, uh, money that, from the prior year that was unexpended that we have available to reallocate. So, uh, combined, we have about 1.7 million to allocate. Uh, can we go back? Thanks. This is a new information, so I didn't incorporate it into the PowerPoint, and it's still, uh, breaking news, basically. So we're still analyzing it, but we, uh, have recently been informed that, uh, because of the CARES Act due to COVID, um, the COVID crisis, Congress has, uh, allocated additional CDVG money that will be allocated to jurisdictions, and we've notified we'll be getting about $530,000 in CDVG money that can be used for immediate COVID response. But I don't know much about that yet, other than we'll be getting this money. Uh, it's going to be quicker than this process that we're talking about today, and it'll be available to be used, uh, specifically for COVID response. And when we have more information, we will definitely come back as soon as possible to, to let you know how that funding operates. And I'll answer questions today, uh, as much as I can. Okay, uh, next slide, please. So, uh, continuing on our general discussion, you can see here our, um, human services allocation. You could see that it's remained, uh, council has allocated, uh, pretty much a level funding for the last few years. Uh, this year, 726,150,000 for fiscal year 2021 is what council has committed. Next slide. You can see that our, um, our CDVG allocation has been going up, uh, slightly over the years, and we're glad for that. This year, we have been informed that we'll be getting 902,268,000. Next slide. The priorities for, uh, the, uh, public and human services category are, uh, so this is the criteria that, uh, our committee that makes the funding recommendations, uh, uses to determine who gets funding. Uh, priority one are programs that meet basic human needs, uh, and reduce the impact of homelessness and reduce the impact of gang violence. Some examples of basic human needs are your food programs, housing, shelter programs, medical programs. Priority two are programs which are preventative in nature and promote the highest degree of functioning the individual is capable of achieving. So these are counseling programs, childcare, homework assistance, after-school programs, that sort. Next slide. Because we combine the city human services funding with the CDBG money, we also have to incorporate the city PG priorities, which we talked about at the previous presentation. These are just specific to CDBG. Those are homeless assistance, public facilities and infrastructure, and the Economic Development Program. Next slide. So the recommendations that are presented here today are, were made by the Community Development and Human Services Committee. This group is appointed by council, and they're the ones that are tasked with analyzing the applications, interviewing all the applicants, and making the hard decisions as to who should get funding. Hopefully, they're listening today. We, we always commend them for their time. They spend days and hours on this process, not just interviewing the applicants, but reading the applications, doing site visits of all the organizations. So we're always grateful to them. Next slide. So we began the, the funding process in October with public noticing. So we published an ad in the paper. We also sent an email to all organizations that have signed up on our interested applicant list. That includes current grant recipients, any nonprofit that has heard about our funding program. We posted it on the city website. We posted it on the city's social media. We also created a Facebook page for specific to our CDBG human services program. We posted an ad, I'm sorry, we sent out press releases to all media, including English and in Spanish, to Spanish media. We held a mandatory workshop for all applicants in November to outline the requirements of the program. And then we were available for the month that the applications were being written by phone and email to answer any questions that the applicants have. And they submitted the applications online via Zoom Grant. Next slide. So by the deadline of September 17th, we received 54 applications. And the requests totaled more than $2.2 million, which exceeded our available funding by more than $800,000. This, I think, was the biggest gap between requests and what was available that I've ever seen. So it was quite a task to, to make these recommendations. The committee members analyzed each application package. This includes a 30-floor question application form, proposed outcome measures, client demographics, program and agency budget. As staff, we reviewed their application, the applicant audit, and their tax returns to make sure that there's no financial issues that we should be aware of, to analyze the organization's fiscal health. The committee spent four nights interviewing the applicants, and then additional meetings. Can't remember right now. It might have been eight meetings total during February to deliberate on the press and to finalize the recommendations. Next slide. So after the applications are reviewed and all the interviews are done, committee members go home and, and score the applications based on specific criteria. They look at the agency's history, the track record, the board of directors, their composition, their, the leadership of the board of directors. They look at the quality of the program, whether there is services provided bicultural, bilingually, what the training of the staff to provide the services are. I mentioned the financial health, the need that the organization has demonstrated that they're not duplicating, that they're coordinating with different organizations around the city. So they, they go and they score, and they make their funding recommendations. Zoom Grants then generates an average score and average funding recommendation. And then final recommendations are approved by the full committee on the 25th, and that's what's presented before you today. Next slide. So you could see in the Public and Human Services category, the amount, there were 48 applications with requests over 1.3 million. And we only had 861,490 available. So you could see that there was still quite a gap. The, on the chart that you're looking at, the section in red is the amount of human services funding. That's the general fund funding. And in blue is the 15% of CDBG money that we're allowed to use for public service activities. So you can see that the vast majority of the funding for these organizations comes from human services funding. So the committee is recommending funding for 45 of the applications. Next slide. In the capital category, that's strictly funded with CDBG funding. The amount of funding was requested was 604,527. I'm sorry, that's the amount available. Can we go back? Thank you. We received requests totaling 919,000. So they're recommending funding for five applicants. One is a facility improvement for a nonprofit. Three are local park improvements, and one is an economic development program. Next slide. There, there is a recommendation report that fully outlines a much more detailed description of our allocation process and the exact dates when the meetings were held. And it contains a summary description of all the programs that are recommended for funding. It's been posted on the city website, copied with email to council. And hopefully, if we get to print it again, we'll, we'll send you printed copies. Next slide. So you'll see here, the next three slides is just a snapshot of all the different organizations that are being recommended for funding. First page is priority one, activities. Next slide. You see priority two, activities. And I wanted to highlight to you that these organizations are the type of organizations that are so valuable right now as we're going through this COVID crisis. They're designed to help out the people that are in need right now. And just to give you a few examples, some of the current grant recipients and ones that are also being recommended for funding, again, for this year, include the Food Bank, Community Action Commission, and Organic Soup Kitchen. These organizations have stepped up their efforts to provide meals to homebound seniors and medically vulnerable individuals. Organic Soup Kitchen recently completed a CDBG-funded project with us to expand their kitchen capacity so they can provide, provide more meals. And this happened just in time for them to be able to make more meals. And hopefully, they're, they're here today to speak about what they're doing. CAC is providing, you know, delivering food. The Food Bank is providing, delivering food directly to seniors. Some of the other programs that I thought would be important to highlight, this funding will be available after July 1st. And hopefully, by then, the crisis will be behind us, but the impacts, the economic impacts will be beneficial, would benefit from this funding. For example, children that are served by the Boys and Girls Club or other organizations that provide after-school tutoring will need that extra help with their homework because they have lost time by not being able to go to school or have maybe not as good access to online classes. Our small businesses will need the assistance of organizations like Women's Economic Ventures for, for more training and for loans. Hopefully, they're also here talking about what they're doing. The capital projects, they'll provide a much-needed boost to the economy by providing construction grants to contractors. So overall, I think you'll be proud of the work that is being done here and comforted by the fact that this funding is available during this fiscal time. Next slide, please. And these are the capital projects. And, and you actually have, as part of your attachment, attachment, the first attachment has a complete list of, of all the organizations. And next slide, please. So the next step is council does approve the funding recommendations today. The next step will be to execute grant agreements. We've attached the template. Normally, they're available for, in the city clerk's office, but for now, they're just attached. We'll have to figure out how we execute paper contracts during this time. And then next thing, if approved, we'll submit our, the projects that are submitted, that are proposed to be funded with CDBG, we'll send those to HUD for approval. Next slide. So that concludes my presentation. I, just to remind you of what we're asking today, we're asking for council to approve the committee's funding recommendations that's presented in attachment one of your agenda report, and to authorize the community, community development director to negotiate and execute agreements implementing the funding recommendations. Next slide. And that concludes that presentation.
Ms. Stotts, I'll start with a question. You had mentioned in your presentation that there was COVID-specific money. The federal government told you that? And what was the amount?
We've been notified by HUD that we are going to be getting 530,774. We just found that out sometime late last week, so.
Can you say it a little slower? 500? Okay, that's good news in a dark time, but yeah. Okay, so we have questions. Mr. Jordan, actually, we were going to ask, we, we have a list, and so we were going to go to Ms. Gutierrez first. And so Ms. Gutierrez, I think before you were elected to the city council, you served on the committee that made decisions related to these funds. Correct me if I'm wrong, but go ahead. Do you have any questions? Ms. Alejandra Gutierrez? We'll move on to Mayor Pro, oh, there you go. Thank you.
No questions.
Okay, thanks. Mayor Protem Sneddon? Questions?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Is this a, a time for comments also or just for questions?
Let me ask the clerk if we have. Okay.
Madam Mayor, we do have several members of the public ready to speak.
Right, so questions only, please?
No questions, thanks.
Okay. Mr. Friedman, questions?
No questions.
Ms. Harmon, questions?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I do have a couple of questions. Thank you. Let me turn on my video. Sorry. Thank you, Ms. Stotts. So first, with regard to the federal funds that are a part of this package, is there a, a date by which we must use them or lose them? What's the use-by date for that portion of the funds that we're getting from the federal government that's not coming from our general fund?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Harmon, there are numerous deadlines, so I'll try to explain as much as I can. We have a deadline to submit our action plan to HUD, and that is August 16th of this year. That is no later than that. If we don't have a plan submitted, we lose the funding period. That's why we started the 30-day period. Normally, our, our normal deadline is May 15th, but because of the COVID crisis, HUD has extended the deadline to the statutory deadline of the CDBG program to submit action plans. So that's August 16th. So we have wiggle room there.
Awesome, thank you. And then my final question is about the capital piece of this, and I, I may have just missed it. I think you touched on this, but I'm a little bit confused. Is the capital expenditures, is that a necessary part of this so that we can use general fund monies? Or, I guess I'm confused about, is that, those capital expenditures, are those required decisions to be made? And must we spend some portion of this money on capital projects?
Yeah, so the CDBG program is, is supposed to be a brick-and-mortar program. It is for infrastructure development, community resources development, sidewalk streets, park improvement. We're allowed to use 15% for public services. So the type of projects that are being presented today are the ones that are specifically what should be funded with CDBG funding.
Okay, so if I'm understanding you correctly, because of CD, the way, the nature of the CDBG program, there has to be some capital improvement projects that go into this?
The program, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Those are my questions for now. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thanks.
Mr. Oscar Gutierrez, questions?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't have any questions, but I just wanted to say thank you for, for all the efforts that the, the organization's done to support the local nonprofits, especially now. Thank you.
Very good. Mr. Jordan, your questions?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ms. Stotts, you, I had a question also on the capital part. So the use of those monies is driven by the CDBG policy? And the decision on those monies now does, has a timeline that's been extended until August? Is that what I heard you say?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Jordan, the deadline is to submit our proposed list of applications. It would still have to go through all the steps that we're going through right now. So we do have to go through the public hearing that we just went through, and we'd have to do another 30-day public hearing if we change the recommendation today, because this is what we're publishing and what we're proposing to fund. So the deadline to submit a proposed activity is August 16th, and that's the absolute deadline that we have between now and August 16th.
So to accomplish what we're doing today and, and at the next, whatever the next meeting would be, just has to happen not before the middle of May now, has to happen before the middle of August?
We have until the middle of August to, to submit.
And then I, I appreciate you trying to link back some of the action that took place in the fall to what's going on in the ground today. But I just want to be clear, there, the process that this took to get to here, there was absolutely no discussion or no ranking based on a future pandemic. It, you can make, you can make some connections that the, that the, the recommendations would help with that, but there was absolutely no discussion of what's on the ground today back in the past, was there?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Jordan, no. The priorities that council adopted were basic human needs and programs that are preventative in nature.
Well, I'm actually specifically talking about the process you went through with the committee to receive applications, to rate them, to grade them, to what the applicants were required to put in. There was nothing as part of that process that was related to a future pandemic?
No.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Jordan. Okay, so we did questions, and it's time to go to public comment. Ms. Clerk, I hand it over to you.
Madam Mayor and council, we're now going to take comments from the public on this item 18, which is the Community Development and Human Services Committee Recommendations for Human Services and CDBG Grant Funds. A number of people who have already connected using GoToWebinar are, are using the raise your hand feature. I know there are a number of other people who are on the line. If you would like to speak on this item, if you have called in to speak on this particular item, please use the raise your hand feature, and we'll know you want to speak on this. item, please use the raise your hand feature and we'll know you want to speak on this. I'm going to go ahead and, and start going in, it's essentially in alphabetical order by first name with who is indicated, raise your hand. Once we finish everybody, then we'll do one more check to see if anyone else wants to raise their hand. For all these speakers, you will each have three minutes. Before I unmute you, please unmute your phone or your computer audio so that we can hear you. And please turn down your TV or whoever you are watching the meeting. Please say your name and you will have three minutes. Amy Fletcher is the first person. I'll read a couple of names coming forward also. After Ms. Fletcher, we have Anna Marie Gott, then Chuck Flax, then Daniel Hurlinger, then Adalia Gomez. So Ms. Fletcher, you're first. I will unmute, you please state your name and then go ahead and speak. You have three minutes. Go ahead, start now, please.
Hello, my name is Amy Fletcher. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and City Councilmembers. I'm the Director of Impact and Engagement for Women's Economic Ventures, or WEVE. Since 1991, WEVE has provided training, consulting, and loans to local entrepreneurs throughout Santa Barbara and Ventura counties. While we target our services toward women, we do serve men as well. I want to first say thank you to the committee for recommending us for continued CDBG funding this year to support SET, which is our 14-week business plan training program. But since these are unprecedented times for all of us, but especially business owners, I wanted to also give you a brief update on what WEVE has been doing to support the local business community during the pandemic. Days after the crisis began, WEVE developed a survey to better quantify the impact of the pandemic on local businesses, and the results are truly sobering. 79% of businesses reported having to close their business temporarily or reduce hours. 65% have lost sales or customers with an estimated anticipated losses of over $5 million. 20% have had to lay off employees with an estimated 232 layoffs to date. And 63% do not have any form of savings to sustain their business, and only 32% say that they can operate remotely. To meet the needs of local businesses, WEVE is offering all of our training and consulting programs online, including the SET program that's funded by CDBG. And today, 18 of the 19 city of Santa Barbara residents that are enrolled in SET are still participating online. We're providing weekly WEVE Works webinars for critical information and training for entrepreneurs, and about 100 entrepreneurs are attending these webinars weekly. We're updating our COVID page on our website at least once a day, and usually more times than that with pertinent information. And we're providing free consulting to help business owners review their financials, adjust their business models, and apply for critical SBA funding. We also relaunched our Quick Response Loan Program created during the Thomas Fire, and since March 18th, we have received 90 applications totaling over $860,000. We've approved 29 of those applications and made $250,000 in loans. And we continue to receive four to six new loan applications and 50 plus calls to our dedicated COVID response line each day. As we have learned during the Thomas Fire and Montecito debris flow disasters, the recovery process will be long and difficult. And since no one really knows how long the crisis may go on, we expect the need will persist for many years to come. But while the outlook is daunting, we're confident that we have the experience, resources, and partners like the city of Santa Barbara to help many local businesses survive and emerge on the other side of this pandemic stronger and more resilient than before. Again, thank you so much for the recommendation of continued CDBG funding.
Perfect, three minutes. I like it. Next speaker, please.
Madam Mayor and Council, our next speaker is Anna Marie Gott. Ms. Gott, please be ready. Please have muted your, however you are watching the meeting, and unmute your phone or computer audio so we can hear you. I'm just going to read the names of the next callers also. After Ms. Gott, Chuck Flax, Daniel Hurlinger, Adalia Gomez, Jennifer Smith, Kathleen Bauski, Ken Ralph. Okay, Ms. Gott, go ahead. You have three minutes.
I apologize, I had to take a phone call while you were doing a presentation, and because nothing is available online, I could not attend, read any of the. That was discussed. So I don't know if this was covered or not. I'm just going to remind the city council about some issues with some recent projects that involved our community development department and some, and some funds for housing, which was the tiny homes as well as the Salvation Army project. Both of them were basically unvetted by the public. And there were substantial problems with the projects if you looked at our ordinances and how the, the actual projects were going to work. And so I just want to remind you of the substantial public outcry regarding both of those projects and to really try to make sure that if there is any project that is going to have to go through ABR or HLC or Planning Commission, that we get a vetted project, one that has gone through the pre-application review team process, the DART process, and that.
Muted.
Information with all of the letters is made available to the public before anything goes on an ABR agenda, PC agenda, a staff hearing offer, SERF agenda, or an HLC agenda. Because it's often when we see those documents that we actually find out that a project is not completely vetted and that there are issues. And it's only by seeing those documents that the public can then articulate the, the problems with the project. And in both of the projects that I, that I mentioned, which is the Salvation Army, as well as the tiny home projects, they really were not compatible with the neighborhoods. No, no real outreach had been done in one case. And it, it just caused too much community outrage for both of those projects. And both of them, both of those incidents could have been avoided if we had done the right public outreach at the very beginning, and we had actually made sure that the Salvation Army project could be built and that the property was actually zoned for it. Thank you very much.
Very good. Ms. Dotz, if you had a response, please save it until the end of the public comment. Make a note, thanks. And we'll go to the, we'll go to the next speaker. Ms. Clerk.
Mayor and Council, our next speaker is Chuck Flax. Mr. Flax, I will unmute you in a moment. Please make sure your TV or computer sound is all the way off. The next speakers after you will be Daniel Hurlinger, Adalia Gomez, Jennifer Smith, Kathleen Bauski, Ken Ralph, Lee Heller, and Nancy Tilly. All right, Mr. Flask, Flax, I'm going to unmute you. Please state your name and make your comment. You have three minutes. Go ahead now.
Hello, this is Chuck Flax. I am the Director of Programs at PATH Santa Barbara. I just wanted to thank the committee for the ongoing support of PATH operations. I wanted to take the opportunity to update the council on our COVID preparations. We are working very closely with the county, Public Health, and the Department of Community Services to ensure the safety of staff and residents of PATH, as well as working on a committee basis with SB Act and the city to determine how to best use city resources for the purposes of sheltering homeless people, of taking care of any homeless people that may in fact contract the virus, and in general, really, you know, providing the kind of support that we need to the city's infrastructure. I have to say that PATH has done a really good job at, in preparation. We've been working closely with our statewide organization. We've completely retooled our way of managing our residents to maintain six-foot separation, to increase the amount of sanitation and cleanliness in the facility, to make sure that, washing their hands, and now distributing masks and other face coverings so that people can protect themselves. We've pulled beds apart. So we're really doing our, our part to try to maintain a COVID-free environment. And the good news is that the efforts of homeless providers across the state seems to be paying off. The homeless community has not been as hard hit as, as many folks expected. I'm not aware of any of PATH residents current, having contracted the virus yet, and we hope that that continues. So once again, thank you for the ongoing support. I really want to commend Laura Doubles and the city for their support of the homeless community and building a real collaborative across all the different organizations locally to try to end this situation with homelessness and the COVID crisis.
Very good. Next speaker.
Our next speaker is Daniel Hurlinger. Mr. Hurlinger, please mute your TV or computer, however you're watching, and please unmute your phone or whoever you're going to call in. Mr. H, after Mr. Hurlinger, we have Adalia Gomez, Jennifer Smith, Kathleen Bauski, Ken Ralph, Lee Heller, Nancy Tilly. Okay, Mr. Hurlinger? Let's see if we can unmute. Having a little trouble unmuting. Sorry, you're, you're good to go, Mr. Hurlinger.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Councilmembers. I am Hurlinger, Chair of the Rental Housing Mission Board. I have served as a mediator for the past 15 years. The rental housing mediation program has been successfully assisting landlords and tenants in our community to resolve their disputes out of court for the past 44 years. Program is comprised of two full-time staff. This includes one bilingual physician and 15 city council-appointed volunteer mediators who are trained in mediation. The program objectives are to help resolve landlord-tenant disputes out of court by using a range of dispute resolution services, including staff consultations and mediation. This results in housing retention and retention of homelessness. The second objective is to provide accurate information on landlord-tenant rights and responsibilities to empower the parties to make informed decisions to resolve their disputes. Due to the governor's stay-at-home order, the program's operation has been modified. Staff have been working remotely since March 18th. This is results in, there has been, as a result, there has been an increase in programs' requests for services since January 1st, due to the new local and state laws, including rent control, just cause evictions, mandatory lease offers, and the COVID-19 emergency eviction moratorium. Staff and mediators are neutral and listen to everybody associated with our efforts. This important program addresses societal issues before they become problems. We urge you to approve the Community Development Human Services Committee's recommended funding in the amount of $20,500. This grant funding will assist the program in the continuance of our good work. Thank you for your continued support.
Very good. Next speaker.
Our next speaker is Adalia Gomez. Ms. Gomez, please turn down the sound on your TV or however you are watching the meeting and unmute your phone. After Ms. Gomez, we will have Jennifer Smith, Kathleen Bauski, Ken Ralph, Lee Heller, Nancy Tilly, Patricia Kealan, Kealan, sorry, and Paul Gaton. Okay, Ms. Gomez, I'm going to unmute you. Please state your name and make your comments. You have three minutes. Go ahead.
Good afternoon, my name is Adalia Gomez, and I am the Program Director of Standing Together to End Sexual Assault, SESA, formerly SB Rape Crisis Center. On behalf of SESA, I would like to thank the city of Santa Barbara Community Development and Human Services Committee for the time and effort that they spent reviewing grant applications and formulating recommendations for the city council. We would also like to thank the city of Santa Barbara staff for the support that they provide grant applicants every year. We're grateful for the recommendation of funding for sexual assault counseling, support services, and community education. Standing Together to End Sexual Assault is dedicated to empowering sexual assault survivors, their family members, and friends. SESA hosts a confidential 24-hour hotline and provides counseling to support survivors in ways that need their unique experience. We also engage community members in education to increase their awareness and understanding of sexual violence. All of our work would not be possible without your financial support. As you are all aware, COVID-19 has brought a lot of uncertainties for our community. In an effort to do our part in reducing risk for our clients, staff members volunteered from the community, SESA has changed the way in which it offers its services. During this time, the agency is still operating and all of our services are still available through methods that do not require in-person contact. Individual and group counseling sessions are taking place through telehealth platforms. We are still providing survivors emotional support during police reports and medical exams by being present through video and telephone. We are working closely with our local law enforcement agencies, medical professionals, and social service agencies to ensure that survivors' needs are being met. April is Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and we are continuing to educate our community through our online campaign, Virtually Together to End Sexual Assault. I invite you all to join us online and stand with us to raise awareness about this issue. SESA is committing to, is committed to helping survivors of sexual assault and their loved ones lead safer and healthier lives. Our top priority as a trauma-informed and healing-centered agency is to care for ourselves, survivors, and our communities. We will do all that we can to continue to support those who reach out to us for our services, especially survivors who may already feel isolated and in distress. City Council, thank you for the support you have provided standing together to end sexual assault over the last several years. Please continue to extend your support and assist us in our mission. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jennifer Smith. Ms. Smith, please unmute your phone and mute however you are watching the meeting. I will call on you in a moment. The next speakers coming up after this are Kathleen Bauski, Ken Ralph, Lee Heller, Nancy Tilly, Patricia Kealan, Paul Gaton, Rob Hammond, and Rosa Paredes. Again, if you have called in or used the software to participate in this meeting and you wish to speak on this item, item 18, the Human Services and Community Development Block Grant Funds, please raise your hand using the software if you have not done so already. Okay, now it's Ms. Smith. I will unmute you. Please state your name and you have three minutes. Go ahead, Ms. Smith.
Good afternoon, my name is Jennifer Smith, and I'm the Executive Director of the Legal Aid Foundation of Santa Barbara County. And I wanted the committee for their recognition for funding. Hope that you will recommend it. And hopefully, I sent an email probably about three minutes before this meeting began, and hopefully you'll receive it. But I just want to reiterate that we are a nonprofit firm that provides free legal assistance to low-income and other vulnerable city residents in order to ensure equal access to justice. And so the way I like to think of it is, in the criminal context, many people are aware that you're entitled to a public defender in those cases. But when people are in the civil system and facing a potential eviction from their housing, survivor of domestic violence, and in need of restraining order, our system does not guarantee you representation. And so legal aid, trial, app for individuals not afford to hire a civil attorney on their own or have other barriers to justice. And so two key areas will provide services through CDBG funding. First are to individuals, families, seniors who have, who are at risk of homelessness due to eviction, and also survivors of intimate partner violence, abuse, sexual assault, and trafficking who may be in need of restraining order, custody order, and related type services. We are the only provider of these free legal services in the city of Santa Barbara. And as you can imagine, during the crisis, so we are still open and operating remotely because we're assisting clients by phone, and we anticipate a continued and increasing need for our services moving forward. And we know there's constantly changing rules and regulations, rights and responsibilities, that there's going to be a financial impact, and we anticipate that the need for our services is going to increase in the months. So we are thankful to the committee for the recommendation, and thank you for the time and consideration.
Thanks, Ms. Smith. Next speaker.
Our next speaker is Kathleen Bauski. Ms. Bauski, please unmute your phone or computer audio, however you will be speaking to us, and please turn off volume on your TV or however you are watching the meeting in a moment. moment. I will unmute you. You can say your name and make your comment. Next speakers, after you, Ken Ralph, Lee Heller, Nancy Tilly, Patricia Kealan, Paul Catan, Ron Hammond, Rosa Paredes, and Danny Anderson. Okay, Ms. Bouski, please go ahead. You have three minutes.
Hi, this is Kathleen Bouski. I'm the Executive Director at Transition House, and I want to thank the city for its past support of Transition House's emergency shelter and long-term housing program for homeless families with children. And I just want to say thank you to the very dedicated staff of the Community Development Department and to the volunteer members of the Community Development and Human Services Commission that have worked literally for months vetting the organizations and applications that sought funding through this process. I'm grateful as a taxpayer for the work that they put in. I know that our community is doing the best it possibly can to make sure that this money goes to where it needs to go and is invested in our community in the most responsible way. So thank you to Community Development Department staff and to the commissions, commission members. I also wanted to give you just a real brief update on Transition House. We are doing well, all things considered. Due to COVID-19, our program was run in part by volunteers, particularly our food service. We have had to do away with volunteer support, but we're happy to say that we have a great partnership with our Naldies Cafe across the street from our facility, who's now doing dinner service and some food for lunch the next day for all of our families in the shelter. And I can see Mayor Mario shaking her head up and down. Yes, they're loving the food. We have 17 homeless families in the shelter right now and another five in our transitional housing program. So far, all are healthy. The shelter is open 24/7, and the families are doing an extraordinary job of practicing social distancing. The kids as well are doing the best they can in the confines of the shelter environment, but we're really pleased with how well everyone is getting along during this very difficult time. So we hope that good health continues in our program. We are working with the county and city staff, and we're prepared if anyone does become ill with COVID-19, but so far, we're doing very well. So thanks again to the city of Santa Barbara for your tremendous support of our program.
Thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Gomez.
Our next speaker is, let's see, that was just Ms. Bouski. Next is Ken Ralph. Speakers after that will be Lee Heller, Nancy Tilly, Patricia Kealan, Paul Catan, Ron Hammond, Rosa Paredes, and Danny Anderson. Roxana Petty, I see that you have called in. I don't see that you've raised your hand. I know I did receive an email from you right before we started. Oh, you've raised your hand. Perfect. Okay. Now we're going to go to Ken Ralph. And please state your name and unmute your phone. Mute however you're watching the meeting. And go ahead. If you can, I think, there you go.
Okay, this is Ken. Hi, Madam Mayor and City Council members. Thank you so much for considering our request for funds. My name is Ken Ralph. I am a volunteer, Director of Showers of Blessing for the past four and a half years. And we provide showers to the homeless. They're free. We provide underwear, socks, toiletries, and we do this at normally seven sites a week, all for free. We have four employees. Three of those are currently experiencing homelessness right now. And I also want to say thank you, particularly Madam Mayor, for your help and Laura Doubles' help in getting us the emergency locations, particularly at Pershing Park. And I wanted to let you know that today, we had over 75 people come to the site, to our shower trailer. We were able to feed everybody. We were only able to give showers to about 35 people, and we've referred a lot of the others to our Girls Inc. site, which will be happening tomorrow. But this has been a lifesaver, and thank you so much for allowing us to keep doing this. I wanted to just share one brief little story. I was at a wedding reception, and you know how it is, you're sitting next to strangers at a wedding reception, idle smoke, and I was telling the woman next to me about the shower trailer, and she says, "Oh, my God, you're with the showers." Turns out, she worked for the library downtown. And she said that the difference between when we, before we started our shower operation at Our Lady of Sorrows in Alameda Park, was there was an immediate difference in the number of people that they would have to go around in the library and ask to leave because of the smell. They used to have to do it like at least twice a day. Now they do it maybe twice a month, and it has just made a world of difference at the library. And I think this really speaks to the dignity that we add to people's lives. And anyway, we plan to continue. Thank you for your support. I really look forward to working with the city in the future. This is our first time that we've actually begun to collaborate, so thank you very much.
Thank you. And I'm tempted to start an expression of gratitude, but I'd have to say it to everybody who's been on the line. Thank you, everyone.
Our next speaker is Lee Heller. After Lee Heller, it will be Nancy Tilly, Patricia Kealan, Paul Catan, Ron Hammond, Rosa Paredes, and Danny Anderson. Okay, Lee Heller, I will unmute you. Please unmute your phone or whoever you're speaking, and please mute your TV. Go ahead.
Madam Mayor and members of the council, I want to begin by thanking all of the committee members for their incredible work and also expressing appreciation for the work of all these organizations. But I also want to point out that it's a whole new day. The decisions made in November reflected the reality that we lived in in November, and the recommendations being given to you today don't reflect that same reality. Many of the recipients that are speaking today or on the list are very likely to still be recipients were you to revisit and rethink these allocations. In fact, some of them might need and deserve larger allocations. So I would actually encourage the council, I know there's not a lot of time, but to think about asking the committee to go back and rethink whether or not the recommendations being made make sense in the midst of a pandemic that's going to go on for quite some time. So that's just something I want to put in front of all of you. Thank you very much.
Very good. Next speaker.
Our next speaker is Nancy Tilly. After Nancy Tilly, we'll have Patricia Kealan, Paul Catan, Ron Hammond, Rosa Paredes, Roxana Petty, and Danny Anderson. Okay, Ms. Tilly, please unmute yourself, turn down your TV, and go ahead.
Good afternoon, Mayor Mario, City Council members, and Community Development Human Services Committee and staff. I am Nancy Tilly, Chief Operating Officer and Chief Financial Officer for the Santa Barbara Neighborhood Clinics. Thank you for your past support. We take this opportunity to also thank the City of Santa Barbara Community Development Human Services Committee and the Community Development staff for their work in evaluating all agencies' grant applications and for their recommendation of our proposed program funding in the amount of $30,000. We would appreciate the council's continued support of our homeless dental program. At this time, I'm going to defer the rest of my time to Dr. Charles Fenzee, who is our Chief Executive Officer and Chief Medical Officer, who will present our COVID-19 information.
Madam Mayor and members of the council, thank you very much for this opportunity. And we want to thank the staff for their recommendation. So for the COVID-19 pandemic, we have changed our schedules so that we can keep healthy people coming in in the morning and sick people in the afternoon. We're doing drive-through testing. We have developed telehealth capability, both for medical and dental services, as well as behavioral health services, substance use disorder as well. We are collaborating with Cottage, CADA, Sansom Sanctuary Centers. We are also participants in the Community COVID-19 Planning Task Force to help with the testing and information that goes out to the community. Thank you again for all the hard work that you're doing.
Thank you both, and we'll go to the next speaker.
And if I may, the gentleman who spoke after Nancy Tilly, if that gentleman could send an email with your name and title, so we have it for the minutes, you could send it to clerk, C-L-E-R-K, at santabarbarca.gov. Thank you. Our next speaker will be Patricia Kealan. After Patricia, we have Paul Catan, Ron Hammond, Rosa Paredes, Roxana Petty, and Danny Anderson. Ms. Kealan, again, please unmute your phone, mute your TV. You've got three minutes. State your name and go ahead.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and council members. My name is Pat Kealan. I'm the CEO for the Community Action Commission, and I'd like to start out by thanking the grant committee for all of their hard work. I know it's never an easy decision for them to review all of these very needy organizations and to make difficult decisions, so I'd like to commend them for their, their, their hard work and thank them for their recommendation of funding. I'd like to take this opportunity to update you on CAC's COVID response and the two programs that are recommended for funding, starting with the Senior Nutrition Program. Now, of course, more than ever, seniors need access to free nutritious lunches to help them support a healthy immune system. In the past few weeks, CAC has really ramped up our efforts. We've seen a 36% increase in demand for meals in the city of Santa Barbara and have added an additional 53 seniors to our census. And of course, we're providing meals daily to them, Monday through Friday, at no cost to them. For those seniors who are homebound or disabled, we deliver, of course, directly to their home, and, and we have actually expanded delivery to include any community meal site participants who would prefer to receive their, their meals at home rather than going to the meal sites. Of course, all of the meal sites are closed. We are providing bag lunches from the Santa Barbara Unified School District and distributing them at the meal sites. And we are continuing to see an increasing number of homeless that are coming to the meal sites to pick up a lunch. Currently, we've got approximately 20 homebound, I'm sorry, homeless seniors who are receiving meals daily, and that number is increasing. We expect by next week, we'll be providing over 200 within the city of Santa Barbara alone by Monday. So the efforts are really increasing. Presidio, in particular, the Presidio Dining Site, has increased 300%, going from 10 senior participants to 40 in the last two weeks. So we're doing our best to meet the needs among the seniors, including the homeless seniors. In our 211 program, we are, of course, very busy helping to support our local Office of Emergency and Public Health to provide up-to-date information on COVID. We have a website now devoted, a webpage devoted to COVID. Our trained call representatives are taking calls on, on, okay, thank you. We're very busy at 211 as well.
There, you were timing yourself nice.
Yes.
Ms. Kealan, thanks.
Thank you.
Next speaker.
Our next speaker will be Paul Catan. After that, Ron Hammond, Rosa Paredes, Roxana Petty, and Danny Anderson. Mr. Catan, I will unmute you. Please unmute yourself and turn down your TV. Go ahead. You have three minutes.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and members of the council. Thank you for the opportunity to comment. My name is Paul Catan, and I'm the Grants Manager for Family Service Agency. First, I'd like to extend our thanks to the City Council staff and members of the Community Development Committee for your steadfast support of these programs that help vulnerable people, including your consideration of continuing support for our family support services, senior services, and long-term care ombudsman programs. Your commitment of funding provides critical support for these programs in ordinary times as well as making it possible for us to respond in times of crisis. As an essential service provider, Family Service Agency is continuing to provide basic needs and mental health support for families and seniors across the county in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. And I'd like to share some of the adaptations that each program is making to serve the growing number of people in need. During the crisis, as you know, many more people across the county have been impacted by lost wages, the pressures of caring for children at home, stress of the pandemic, stay-at-home order, and for seniors, lack of access to their usual ways of getting essentials like prescriptions. And I think we've all been hearing this and experienced this, that children, seniors, are particularly vulnerable at this time. In order to keep everyone safe, we're being creative in how we provide assistance. For example, we've had to postpone parenting classes through our Family Support Services Program. So in order to provide support to parents during this very stressful time, we now have parent coaching warm lines across the county that are staffed by our bilingual parent educators. Similarly, similarly, we figured out how to help people virtually in completing concrete support applications for health insurance, unemployment, CalFresh food assistance, and other, other basic needs, as well as continuing to provide, to help them stabilize through concrete support, case management, and coaching. And FSA is continuing our mental health counseling and support for individuals' families, as well as through our Senior Services Program for seniors and unpaid caregivers, with our staff now conducting telehealth, telehealth phone and video counseling, which includes teaching our clientele how to participate effectively. Our long-term care ombudsman program are no longer allowed in facilities to monitor the care of residents, so we're actually working more closely with the facilities to connect with residents via phone and video calls. And our staff are experiencing exponential increases in the call from family members of residents, as you would imagine, and FSA is able to facilitate communication between family members and facilities. Along with these essential services, we're strengthening partnerships in order to expand services to meet emergent needs. We've increased our partnership with the Food Bank and are assisting with additional emergency food distribution, as well as delivery of home meals to homebound seniors. And through that, we're able to link seniors and unpaid caregivers to basic needs assistance through our other programs. And as you all know, we have an integrated, our integrated basic need and mental health counseling programs, of which we are seeing a lot more need at this time. So thank you again for your consideration of supporting our grant-funded projects and your continued support of programs that are serving vulnerable people now.
Thanks so much. Next speaker.
Okay, I believe our next speaker is Ron Hammond. Folks who have not yet spoken and want to speak on this item, if you could please raise your hand once more in the software, but I believe Mr. Hammond was our next person. So, Mr. Hammond, if you could unmute yourself and turn down the volume on your TV, I will unmute you. You may state your name, and you have your three minutes. Go ahead.
Can you hear me at this point? Great. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and City Council members. I'd like to thank the committee on behalf of Planned Parenthood California Central Coast for your hard work and for your consideration of this grant. I am the Director of Institutional Giving and want to report out that at our Santa Barbara Health Center, as in our other four health centers along the central coast, remains open to meet the sexual and reproductive healthcare needs of our patients during this fraught time. The grant request would be to help support our Rita Salinas Patient Assistance Fund, which continues to support the patients that who, without financial support, may not receive needed medical care. The Assistance Fund covers costs primarily associated with care that goes to those who are addressing sexually transmitted infections and birth control issues. We anticipate increased need on the part of Santa Barbara residents who access the Assistance Fund, given the current and expected economic distress that will undoubtedly affect most in the city. I'd like to thank you for the recommendation that our Santa Barbara Health Center receive these funds to provide financial assistance to our neediest patients. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Clerk?
Okay, I believe our next speaker on this item was Rosa Paredes. Rosa, I will unmute you in a moment. Please unmute yourself and turn down the sound on your TV or however you are watching. I believe- are watching. I believe that Roxana Petty and Danny Anderson were the last people to wish to speak. If anyone else wants to speak on this item, please make sure to raise your hand within the software. Okay, Ms. Paredes, please state your name. You have three minutes. Go ahead.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, council members and staff. My name is Rosa Paredes. I'm the president at St. Vincent's, and I'm representing two programs, the Father Virgil Cordono Center and the Family Strengthening Program. First off, I want to thank you for your time and continued support that we continue to receive from the city of Santa Barbara that support both of our programs. I want to also thank the staff and the committee for performing a thorough review of all the grant submissions and for their recommendation. I'm sure you've all read our application and know much about our program, so I'm just going to highlight a few items on how we are dealing with the COVID pandemic. Thankfully, we have been able to provide services for both of our programs. But I'm going to focus first on the Father Virgil Cordono Center, and then I'll move on to the Family Strengthening Program. So the Father Virgil Cordono Center has closed a day center location due to the current space being too small to allow for proper physical distancing. In addition, many of our volunteers are high-risk and cannot continue to come to the center. During the time of this closure, we are still actively participating in the South County Coordinated Outreach Team Meetings that occur twice a week and are very helpful. By participating in this group, we have been able to obtain solar chargers, face masks, and information about services available to our our members who attend our day center. In addition, we've been distributing food, mail, and additional supplies out in our community. We contact our members by reaching out to them by cell phone and update our outgoing message that tells them where daily updates on the services that are available to them. Daily, we have been distributing about 10 to 15 meals a day, and we connect with them while using physical distancing guidelines out in the community. Just last week, we were able to provide laundry services at local laundromats, and we make appointments three to four members at a time, and we help them by giving them detergent, funds, while talking to them, giving them meals. And this has been going well. So we're going to continue to do that. And next week, we'll start helping them with the census. Moving on to the Family Strengthening Program, during these challenging times, we're managing to maintain almost all of our services. Our program therapists, two case managers, and program director are all working remotely. One case manager lives on campus, is here in person but practicing physical distancing. All of our appointments and therapy sessions are taking place virtually, and housing is still being provided to all the mothers and children. And referrals are still being made. We're using this time as an opportunity to teach our clients the safest way to access care, given our current situation. We've also been able to waive our program fee for all the mothers who have lost their jobs, and we received additional brown bags from the Food Bank and purchased diapers for many of our clients. The only service we have temporarily suspended is the parenting class, but we're looking at ways to get laptops for each of the moms in their bedrooms so that they can take the parenting classes virtually. Again, thank you for your time and support.
Thanks. Thank you. We'll go ahead. A couple more people?
Yes, Madam Mayor and council members. Our next speaker is Roxana Petty. Ms. Petty, please turn on the, I'm sorry, turn off the volume on your TV or whoever you're watching, and unmute yourself. You have three minutes. Speakers after you will be Danny Anderson and then Andrea Slayby-Carocchio. Ms. Petty, please go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor and City Council Members. Now more than ever, we are incredibly grateful to have you all support us in the way you have for many years. As you all are aware, during these difficult times, we are having to reevaluate how to bring our services to our community. That is still greatly in need, if not more now than ever. We understand that our parents and our teens have reached out to us to continue our services, and in a matter of a week, we were able to reframe all of our groups and bring them and have them be available to all of our students through our in-school programming and our after-school programming, as well as our monthly parenting programs that we have. And this is all through Zoom. And so I just want to thank you so much for being a part of the partnership that we need from you and from our other donors to keep us in a position where we are able to bring our employees employment through this crisis. Because of that, we are able to provide not only the services that we were providing before, but also new services through AHA Connect groups that are being available to our teens here in our community and then outside our country. And we also have teens that are coming in from international bases. We're very grateful to be able to provide our services in Spanish and in English to them. As we move forward through these months of uncertainty, we will continue to reevaluate how we bring our services to our educators as well. And working with the Santa Barbara Unified School District, we are currently finding ways to provide these support groups to our teachers that are also going through a difficult time, trying to provide their education to so many teens in our community. I thank you all so much for your support, and I continue to look forward to the day where we can all see each other in person.
Thank you. Us too. Next speaker.
Our next speaker is Danny Anderson. Ms. Anderson, as you know, unmute yourself, turn down your TV. You may state your name, and then you have three minutes. Please go ahead.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and City Council Members. I'm Danny Anderson, Executive Director of the Independent Living Resource Center. We want to thank you so much for your continued support. ILRC has been providing services to individuals with disabilities of all income levels and all ages in the tri-county area for 44 years. With our headquarters located in Santa Barbara, our mission is to promote independent living and full access for individuals with disabilities through advocacy, education, and action in our communities. And we've been very grateful to work with you as our supportive local representatives throughout the years, especially in times like these. People with disabilities are more vulnerable and easily overlooked. We are here to guide them through these difficult times with resources and support while remaining focused on their long-term independence goals, such as housing benefits, assistive technology, and much more. We're currently providing all of our services remotely to our consumers. And in my opinion, one of the most impactful services that we provide as disabled individuals ourselves is peer support, both individually and through groups. We invite all of you to join our newly created Zoom chat space on Friday afternoons. Just contact any of our offices or visit our social media for more info. We know it's important to communicate a sense of community in any way we can right now. And I just want to take a moment to say thank you so much to the grant committee for their hard work over these past few months. We know that they're tasked with a very difficult job, and we appreciate the time they take. Thank you all so much, and please stay well.
Thank you. One, our final speaker, is it? Okay.
Yes, Madam Mayor and council. Our final speaker is Andres Slayby-Carocchio. Ms. Carocchio, please unmute yourself and turn off the volume on your TV. If there's anyone else that wishes to speak on this item, which is item 18, please use the raise your hand functionality right now. Ms. Carocchio, please go ahead.
Hi, Madam Mayor and council. Can you okay? Yes, okay, good, 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 good. I want to say thank you so much for your past support of Organic Soup Kitchen. As you know, we have been delivering soup to cancer patients that's nutrient-dense. It's hermetically sealed. It's organic, vegan, and gluten-free. And we've been collaborating with a lot of local nonprofits who we get clients, we deliver to their clients as well. So it's been a great partnership with the community partners that we do partner with. And we just want to say thank you. We couldn't do it without the community's support, your support. And with the emergency virus that has happened in the last month, we have increased 100 new clients that are vulnerable, have compromised immune systems, and we've just been delivering soup directly to their doorstep each and every week. And we've increased our delivery services to two to three days now instead of just one. And we're also helping out with the Cottage Hospital doctors and nurses and getting the frontline healthcare people soup as well within the community. And with all of this said, we just want to say thank you to the staff, everyone on the committee that helped out, and especially so thank you very much. And we greatly appreciate your support.
Ms. Carocchio, thank you so much. We'll go ahead and close this item. Ms. Clerk? That leads us to council deliberations. And some of the, some of the speakers thanking us did mention their work responding to the COVID-19 pandemic, not all. But I'm looking through this list, and they're responding to the needs of our homeless neighbors, our at-risk youth, senior nutrition, organizations like Legal Aid and Rental Housing Mediation are helping tenants at this time when their incomes are reduced or lost entirely. So the question before us to my colleagues is to approve the recommendations as put forward by the committee that took pains to look through all these applications, vet these applicants, and make these recommendations. So the what's before us is whether to approve the funding recommendations and then to authorize our Community Development Director to execute the grant agreements. And I'll go ahead and open the floor for discussion. And for orders sake, okay, we see people already jumping in. So that's fine. Ms. Sneddon, you go first. Let's see. So Sneddon, Jordan, and then Harmon. Go ahead, please.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just, when I'm looking at this list, it's such an incredible list of members of the community who always step up in every situation, whether they have this additional funding or not. They're filling that space with volunteers, with community members. And it's just such a, looking down the list, it's such a stellar list of community members who are always at the forefront, helping. So I mean, just as a council member, this is the proudest work that I feel I do is approving this funding. And I'm happy to hear more funding maybe coming through for COVID-related. Yes, very excellent news. And I think we could consider that funding for specific COVID-related types of issues. But I'd very happily like to make the motion to approve this funding recommendation and authorize the execution of the funding.
Okay, when we get to motion making, let's see what the others have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jordan, you're next.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I agree with everything that Councilmember Sneddon said. This is a a list of programs and services that clearly are key policy components and considerations for for us, and they all clearly benefit the community. My concern, after saying that, is that the process that got us to this point did not look at it from the lens of what's going on on the street right now with the particular and consequential impacts of the COVID-19. I appreciate some of the narrative that I heard where groups are talking about what they're doing. But my take on this program is that it's a very specific programmatic ask with documentation and measurement on how they spent the money to meet that particular program component that was developed some as far back as November. And I know somebody's going to, well, somebody already made the argument that another half a million dollars plus will be coming, could be coming. I heard differently that that would have to be used for COVID-19, not it could be. And I guess my worry is just is half a million dollars enough, or do we really have impacts out there that we need to address right now that are really worth $1,200,000 with the $700,000 that we're going to obligate today? I'm happy to listen to the rest of the discussion, but what I would prefer to do is send this back to the committee and with the direction to have them look for direct connections to responses to COVID-19 impacts in their determination of the recommendations they've already made. And if they can't make those connections, that those funds or those recommendations then flow into the bucket that's going to be that half a million dollars also. I'm concerned enough, the first speakers we heard today from Women's Economic Ventures quickly went off and detailed all of the dynamic changes that are going on right now on the street, some that we know about, some that we don't know about. And it it just seems responsible, from my viewpoint, that we recognize what's going on on the street right now, and we take a breath and pause and and say thank you. But we make an attempt to steer these funds to impacts that we know that are happening right now related to the pandemic or are going to be happening in the next several months. I think that kind of, that kind of, it's probably not a popular stance, but that I think that kind of encapsulates where I am. Happy to hear what everybody else has to say, but that's my sort of gut reaction on this right now. Thanks.
Ms. Harmon, your turn.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, I will start, I guess, just by sharing the lead. I think I'm with Councilmember Jordan on this, and it's it's not an easy position to take. So I really want to take a few moments to sort of explain my thinking, and hopefully, as a group, we can we can come to some decision that that makes the most sense for this moment. But before I get into that, I think it's important, as both of my colleagues have done thus far, to just express my sincere sincere thanks to the committee and to the staff that works with the committee. It is clear that you all put in an inordinate amount of work to make this happen. And I and clearly, my colleagues were all so grateful for it. Same goes to the nonprofits who developed these really innovative and exciting programs and put forth thoughtful applications and participate in this process. You all have demonstrated your commitment to this city and to making it the best and the most livable city that it can be. So it's in that spirit that I hope all of you and my colleagues as well will consider my comments. In any normal year, this process works so well. It is fair, and it's thorough, and it's sort of by design set apart from the way that ideas and topics can sort of ebb and flow within our public and political consciousness. And I think in any normal year, that is such a good thing. But it's not any normal year. And as we all unfortunately know, we are in the midst of the crisis of our lifetimes. And there are urgent and immediate public health needs, but there are also economic and social consequences that are being felt right now. And those consequences will continue to be felt and will indeed likely become even more extreme as this crisis continues and once, once it's over. I also think it's important to point out that we are looking inevitably at some budget shortfalls. I don't know how much, and I don't know when. But I think they're inevitable. And that means that I don't know when or whether we're going to have a pot of money this size to allocate to you who are out there doing the work directly for our neighbors again. And I think with that in mind, it's our responsibility to make sure that we use this money, that we allocate it proactively to respond to the needs that are emerging from and being exacerbated by this crisis. It's really important to me that we're sure that the allocations of this funding are not based on inputs from the world as it was in November or December, but that the allocations are based in November or December, but that the allocations are based on the world as it is now, based on the reality of the world that we are living in now in light of this crisis and the reality that we will be living in, in the coming weeks and months. So with Councilmember Jordan, I, I would like to consider, to ask my colleagues to consider joining me and just pressing a quick pause and, and sending this back to the committee for reconsideration. I'm envisioning, I think, a process quite similar to what Councilmember Jordan described, something obviously virtual, modified, sped up, not to the degree maybe that was taken the first time around, but really just giving the committee and our nonprofit community the opportunity to come back to the table, to come back to the table and consider our priorities through the lens of this crisis and what we anticipate, the impacts of this crisis being moving forward. And to think about ways that we can center our community when we allocate these funds and the needs of our community as those needs exist today. To the committee members who are no doubt watching today, I know that this is asking so much of you. And I just want to say directly to you that I would never make this suggestion were it not for the urgent emergency circumstances that we now find ourselves in. And I hope that you come to understand my position as I have, really as an opportunity for us to think about and ensure that we're meeting our neighbors where they are now and serving them where we are now. I see this as a chance for us to make sure that we are creative and responsive and forward-thinking and to really put together a set of allocations that are kind of like a local, really effective Santa Barbara stimulus package. And that's an incredible opportunity that I don't know that we'll have again, and it's one that I really don't want to see us let pass by. To the nonprofits, so many of you are doing such amazing work, and you spoke so eloquently about it today. I know that you're counting on this money, a lot of you are. And I want you to understand that this is not a position that I take lightly, and it's certainly not one that was easy for me to come to. I know any delay will likely cause you significant hardship. But I also know that you share my sense of urgency about helping our neighbors through this crisis in a way that's meaningful to them, and that you share my resolve in making sure that we get it right. And I, I know we all believe that we will get through this, and we will, but it's going to mean making some, some difficult decisions along the way. So finally, I just want to close by saying that for me, how I think about my role as a council member, I really believe that for as long as I sit in this office, I owe the highest duty not to an institution or a process or an industry, but to you, my neighbors. And I believe that though this is an incredibly difficult position, and it's one I've struggled with, making the choice to pause and send it back to the committee for reconsideration is the best way that I can live up to that responsibility. So I hope my colleagues will, will consider taking a pause and sending this back, and thank you all for listening. Thanks, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. And Mr. Friedman, go ahead.
Sorry about that. Click the wrong button. Well, first, I'd like to thank all the community-based organizations out there for all the work you're doing and taking the time today to inform us of the how you've changed in response to COVID, but also the services you had before. And I would also like to thank our staff for the work you've done and getting this to us in light of the changed circumstances. My colleagues, Councilmember Jordan and Councilman Harmon, I am going to not follow your recommendation. I'm going to be supporting moving forward with the staff recommendation today. I, I agree with a lot of what you're saying, as well as Councilwoman Sneddon. But the way I look at it is, we have a responsibility as council also to be planning for the non-COVID responses, the non-COVID community needs. And pretty much all these programs are programs that were in place before COVID, they're in place now, and they will be needed afterwards. In fact, they'll be needed even more. And if you look at just some of them, I'll read a couple that stand out are Transition House, Standing Together to End Sexual Assault, Santa Barbara County District Attorney Sexual Assault Response Team Program, the Food Bank, Domestic Violence Solutions, Community Action Commission 211, Child Abuse Listening Mediation. And the reason I, and there's many more in there, I don't want to, just, but I want to get a sense is that we are seeing right now a rise in domestic violence, sexual abuse. We could even be seeing a rise in mental health issues, including suicides. And so for us now to do a COVID stimulus package, when a lot of these organizations are already responding, and they will be counting on this funding because they are receiving reduced funding, either from their donors or a lot of them charge for services, and to go back into a process that a lot of these would already come out. So we're not talking about a $726,150 stimulus package. We would really be looking at, a lot of these would be receiving the same funding. So, so for everyone that would receive the same funding by going back through the process as my colleagues are, are collecting, that would reduce that stimulus package as it was put. And we will have other opportunities with the state and federally that comes down. But the reality is, we're going to need to do something for the, the greater response to this, and we're going to have to make a lot of difficult decisions on how we're going to fund the budget shortfall and respond. And I just don't think putting that on the, the back of the nonprofits right now that are out there doing the work, and they're going to be neat, and they're going to be doing it when we come out of this. And I, I can't support that. And so I'm going to be supporting Councilwoman Sneddon, her motion when it gets made, but to move forward with the staff recommendation and appreciate my colleagues' thought on this. I just come to a different conclusion.
Thanks. Alejandra Gutierrez, go ahead.
I agree with, thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't agree in putting on the hold. I would like to approve this item. Most of all, the nonprofits, organizations that are receiving the funding, they are already serving the most needed, you know, population in our community, which are being affected by this pandemic. And just like Mr. Friedman just mentioned, a couple of those nonprofit organizations, they are waiting for this funding to continue supporting that population. So I would really like to push this item forward, and that's my comment.
Thank you. Mr. Gutierrez, would you like to go? I, I have my opinion ready, but, okay, go ahead.
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you. I, I'm gonna agree with Councilmember Friedman and Councilmember Alejandra Gutierrez and Councilwoman Sneddon. I feel that, that these organizations have, have been stepping up during this crisis, and they, they need the aid now. I, I envy delays on to the committee, so I've, I've seen what they do, and I've seen how they come to their conclusions. And I think even regardless of the fact that what's happening is happening right now, they made some pretty good decisions on who to fund. And I almost feel like to, to comment on the current situation with the pandemic, it's going to take an entire new committee possibly to be able to come up with plans and funding to, to respond to it. So to, to tell this committee to pause or to take and allocate the funding that they have to deal with it doesn't seem entirely appropriate as of right now. It almost seems like it's going to have to take a whole new committee or council to be able to, to bring in experienced people that have dealt with situations like this to try to help in the future. So that's something to think about. So I will, I will support the motion to fund the organizations now. Thank you.
Thank you so much. My comments are that this list of programs and nonprofits is almost put in place for the kind of crisis that we are seeing right now. Public and Human Services, it's, it's, these groups are about addressing poverty, food insecurity, domestic violence, homelessness prevention. And we've had an outbreak of youth violence. It, it was brewing before the pandemic, but the pandemic has taken the students out of their regular routine. They can't go to the basketball court. They don't have the structure of school. And when I look at this list, it's amazingly in place just for this kind of stress on our low-income families, on the people who are living paycheck to paycheck. Counseling, I'm looking here, who was it? Family Service Agency helping with parenting skills? Parents sure need that help right now. There's been an increase of intimate partner violence, just as Mr., Mr. Friedman says, showers of blessing. A, a lot of them ha, deal with homelessness. So with all due respect to Councilmembers Harmon and Jordan, I see where you're coming from. Let's address that need in, in a different manner. Perhaps this $530,000 that's coming would certainly have to be earmarked carefully for direct, for services directly needed because of the COVID-19 crisis. Smaller cities in, all over the country are fighting for more money coming out of the federal government. Right? We weren't big enough to get the first cut from the federal government. More state relief might be coming, and we will certainly spend those monies carefully. So I will call on Ms. Sneddon to go ahead and turn on her, her camera and make a motion, and we'll wait for a second.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I will happily make the motion to approve the funds and to authorize Community Development Department to execute the funds. And for all the reasons very well articulated by fellow council members and the mayor, I also agree that the economic issues that will need to be dealt with will need a larger committee that, that can address those later, or however we address them, but not in these grants right now. So that's the motion, is to approve the funding and to authorize execution of the funding.
Thank you. And Ms. Gutierrez?
I second it.
Okay. Ms. Clerk, we have a motion on the floor. That was Ms. Sneddon and Ms. Gutierrez. And it's the staff recommendation. So go ahead.
Very good. Motion by Mayor Potem Sneddon, seconded by Councilmember Alejandra Gutierrez to approve the staff recommendation for item 18. Mayor Potem Sneddon?
Yes.
Councilmember Friedman?
Yes.
Councilmember Harmon? Councilmember Harmon? I'm sorry, you're muted.
Oh, sorry. Okay, am I on? Thank you. Thank you. Sorry, everyone. To get us to a unanimous vote, I will vote yes.
Councilmember Oscar Gutierrez?
Yes.
Councilmember Jordan?
I'll also get us to unanimous vote. I think in the future, I know this is logistically tough, but typically, we have time for comments, discussion after a motion, and we went to the motion correctly. So there's really nothing more I would say other than what I said already, but to maybe reframe it, but I'll vote yes also.
Councilmember Alejandra Gutierrez?
Yes.
And Mayor Maria?
Aye. So that was a unanimous vote, and I will be more careful next time, Mr. Jordan, to call for discussion after the motion. It did seem like we were all pretty set, and I really appreciate that you and Councilmember Harmon, for the purposes of being united and looking out for these nonprofits in this difficult time that you've agreed to vote the way you, that you did. So that closes, that's unanimous, Ms. Clerk, and it closes this item. And we will go on to the next one. I'm, I'm wondering if people are needing a break, though we didn't rehearse how to take a break. So let's just keep going. I can keep going if you can keep going. So, so Ms. Clerk, what, the next item is number 19.
Yes, and, and Madam Mayor, I believe that items 19 and 20 are going to be combined, so I will, I will read those two items.
Yeah.
Item 19, subject coronavirus updates. And item 20, COVID-19 financial assistance for downtown businesses, hotels, and employees. For this item, I will just read Recommendation D, which is a title, and that's Adopt by Reading of Title Only, a resolution of the Council of the City of San Barbara, ratifying and extending actions of the city administrator to provide financial assistance for businesses, hotels, and employees in response to the COVID-19 emergency. And briefly, I'd just like to remind any members of the public who would like to call in and speak on this item. For, if you wanted to speak on items 19 or 20, please use the raise your hand functionality in the GoToWebinar software. Thank you.
Mr. Casey, go ahead, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council members. As I, as I mentioned at our last meeting, we will have a COVID-19 update on every council meeting for the foreseeable future, just to allow us to talk about what the current best practices are and give you key updates about some of the initiatives that are going on within the city. I will start the presentation off and give you a highlight of some of the recent actions that we've taken. Go to the next slide, please. I'll give a update of some of the recent actions that we've taken, and then I'd like to bring in some guest speakers to kind of help fill out our presentation for you. I'd like to invite Laura Doubles to talk about the homeless efforts and the work we're doing with the county to try to address the homeless situation on the South Coast. Bring Chief Lori Luna in to talk about the police's preparedness and response to this crisis and how they are responding to it. And then Sam Edelman, the Executive Director of the Farmers Market. We've invited him to come and talk about the Tuesday and Saturday farmers markets in town and the efforts they're making to address to this crisis and address some of the issues there. And then I'll come back after those three presentations, give you a very brief snapshot of the fiscal situation, talk about when I'll be coming back with more. And then we'll cover the two actions from council, which we already talked about two weeks ago, so I'm not going to spend a whole lot of time. But that was giving a deferral on payment of the bed tax and the waiver of the first quarter of the PBIA, and I'll talk about those at the end. So if it's okay, I'll go through my portion of the presentation and then invite the others to join in after that. Next slide, please. So I think one of the key changes that has occurred since we last met came out over the last weekend, and that is guidance from both the federal government, state, and county public health officials is the encouragement to the public to wear cloth masks, to cover your mouth and nose when you're in public, especially at grocery stores and pharmacies and places where you can't practice safe social distancing. They stress over and over that the best practices remain, safe social distancing, stay at least six feet away from people, stay home if you can, and also wash your hands with soap and water vigorously many, many times a day. Those two things are the key top communications that we want to continue to stress to the community. But in addition, wearing the cloth mask is an additive measure that can help. And so there is guidance. They're not encouraging the public to buy the N95 masks. Those really need to be saved and put to the frontline responders in our hospitals and also our police and fire departments. And so they're encouraging people to make your own mask at home. A number of city employees have started doing that all throughout the community. People are making their own cloth masks. And so that is just something we want to stress. But again, to reiterate that wearing the cloth mask, though, does not alleviate us of needing to practice the other really critical components of safe social distancing and also washing your hands frequently. Next slide, please. So city operations, I don't want to go over this. We've talked about it a number of times already, but we continue to provide essential services out in the community. Police and firefighters are working. You'll hear from the police chief in a second. Water is safe to drink and being treated, and our wastewater is being treated, our streets and roads are open, our signals are working. All those kind of critical municipal functions are All those kind of critical municipal functions are still occurring and occurring well. We're providing services online and by phone. We are limiting almost completely any public interaction, again, to emphasize the need to stay home and that's social distancing. But with the use of technology, we are able to provide a lot of the services that we do on a daily basis, both online and by phone. One thing that we have switched to just in the last week is in the building permit side, which is considered an essential function. And so it is open, and we are processing applications. We've gone to electronic submittals for all of our building permit applications. It's been an aspiration of ours. We switched over to that Acela software that you've heard us talk about, and we were slowly moving towards implementing it. This crisis has kind of forced us to look at it and jump head in. And so we have. It's been up and running for a couple of days now. So far, it's working. And so we'll continue to work with that. But that is something that we're doing and practicing and moving quickly with. Businesses who have questions about wanting to know whether they are considered an essential function or not under the governor's order, we have created an email to get those questions. Also, members of the public can use that if they're concerned about an operation and want us to look into it, which we have been doing. That email is landuse@santabarbaraca.gov. It's the email at the bottom of the screen there. And so that is kind of a one-size-fits-all place. If you have a business operation question about whether it's appropriate or not, or if you're a business owner about how to operate. The county public health recently gave new guidance over the weekend as well with restaurant operations, doing some considerations for the employees of the restaurants, but really stressing to the public and the restaurant operators that it really is takeout only. The food must be put in a full container, and you must take that food and walk away, even if there's a chair or a place to sit outside. That is no longer acceptable under the order from the county public health officer. Again, stressing social distancing is the most important thing that we can do. Next slide, please. So many of our parks and recreation facilities are closed. We've talked about this before, but the tennis courts, the beach volleyball courts, don't bring your own net down. We are cracking down on that as well. All the outdoor exercise equipments and playgrounds and parks are not appropriate to use right now. Our indoor recreation facilities are closed. The golf course is closed. We did fence off the skate park because we were unable to control access to that. And so we have had to fence that off. And some of our remote parks, we have closed as well. Next slide, please. So the remaining parks and beaches are open. And this is something the community really needs to help us with because we are trying to balance competing public interest and needs here. We were seeing group activities occurring in the parks, which again is not practicing that safe social distancing. But we want to try to keep our parks open for passive use because there's also a community benefit, as stressed by the public health officials, to getting outside, to getting some exercise, to getting some fresh air, if you can practice the safe social distancing while doing that. And so last weekend, before the weekend, we put out a new order and said parks are remaining open, but no group activities, passive use only. Keep your groups very small to the people that you live with. Don't be meeting friends and other folks in the parks. But walking and exercises is allowed. It's even encouraged to get out and stay safe and stay mentally fit and physically fit and help your immune system to stay strong, but only if you can practice that safe distancing. You've heard a number of people say now, if you go to a destination spot, please don't. Stay home, walk your neighborhood. If you go to a destination spot and the parking lot looks full, don't stop. Move along, go somewhere else. And so we all really need to do that because I think there is a benefit to being able to keep our beaches and parks open. But it's only if we all come together and behave in an appropriate way to get us through this crisis. And is it inconvenient and different than how we're used to living in Santa Barbara? Yes, it is. And is it hard? Yes, it is. It's supposed to be hard. We have recently closed picnic sites and barbecue areas because people were using that in inappropriate ways. And so we've ramped up our closure of that as well. We are keeping many of our restrooms open. That is also guidance from the CDC, especially for the homeless population, that they have a place to have a restroom and to be able to wash and clean. And so you will see that a number of our restrooms are remaining open for that purpose. Next slide, please. So we did have to close the waterfront Cabrillo parking lots, the east and west lots around the Cabrillo Pavilion. We were seeing inappropriate activity there, people staying too long, congregating, setting up kind of camping sites and such. And there are kind of remote lots that we're not able to monitor quite so frequently. So we closed those until further notice. We had to close the boat launch ramp. And I know that has concerned some in the local boating community and fishing community about that. We were one of the last boat launch ramps to close. And so we were getting numerous phone calls from around Southern California from hundreds of miles away, asking if our boat launch ramp was open. And that just made us worried that we were a destination, a regional destination. And that is clearly not the intent of the governor's order to have regional travel at this time for something like that. And so we closed the boat launch ramp. It is open for commercial fishermen, and so they can make an appointment with the harbor and keep that open. And I know there are others that are concerned about that. But again, we're having to make sacrifices, and we just think that is a best practice at this point to close the boat launch ramp. Next slide, please. And then just a quick update we did hear from MTD. I don't have the details on this slide. You can go to the MTD website. But they have had to reduce their bus service as well, with several lines canceled until further notice. And so you'll see a significant reduction in transit service. The labor line, we talked about that last time as well. We have put up additional signage to provide guidance for social distancing, both in English and Spanish. So that is something we are monitoring. The labor line is kind of formalized down there on Yonanoli Street, but it's not. So if we just closed it off, we fully expect that the labor line would just move to somewhere else. And so we will continue to try to educate the social distancing in that area as best we can. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. So that concludes kind of my brief overview of those items. I'm either happy to answer some questions now, or we can go through the other speakers, and then I can be happy to answer questions after we go through the other. We have three guest speakers here as well.
Mr. Casey, I will jump in and ask you a couple of questions. I think the first thing I wanted to say is I looked at the county's public health website, and there are 26 additional positive cases, and that was released today. I'm not sure if someone else in the presentation was going to announce that. So now we have a total of 218 in Santa Barbara County. And I'm mentioning that and to ask you a little bit more about the face covering. I don't want to call it a suggestion because I think it's a really strong directive, though it's not law by any means. But I think, and correct me, the reasoning is that if you have the virus, a mask will help anyone else. If you could just tell us a little bit more about that in the context of every day we have an increased number of positive cases.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. I saw the press release as well that the county just put out. They put out an update every day. The county also had a presentation at the Board of Supervisors this morning. I think their feeling is that Santa Barbara County, we're doing pretty well so far on the social distancing and the number of cases. It's still extremely serious. Please don't take any of my comments to say this is not serious. You'll notice in the city of Santa Barbara, we've had, I think, one case in the last couple of days each day. The large increase in the county from the last day, I believe, came up in the Long Polk area at the federal prison, where I think they have had an outbreak. And so if you listen to the tone and conversation of the daily press conferences at the county, I think they're feeling that we're doing a good job, and the pressure is to keep it up, is to not slow down because the worst thing we can do is get relaxed, that we're making a difference. From what I understand, I'm not a public health official. The cloth covering is strongly recommended when you're out in the public and you're not going to be able to be in control of practicing that safe social distancing. And so they really stress grocery stores, pharmacies, and anything like that. But certainly, they're encouraging people to wear them. And so if you're out and about and you have one, I think they're encouraging you to have it with you and to wear it.
My next question for you. Hendry's Beach, also known as Arroyo Borough Beach County Park. That is a county parking lot, but I think you've done some research. We have other people who want to make questions to you. So thank you, folks, for waiting. And we had some of our staff go out to that parking lot and take a look. And so when Hendry's parking lot is full like that, it looks like it's full of people. But I think we've had some observation that people are doing some social distancing there. I would ask you that. And then I would also, my other thing is, is that if we can get some masks and take them to the labor line, or maybe I would work with a nonprofit to try and do that. The more education that we can do or nonprofits or someone who wants to reach out to that population, I would encourage that. Go ahead, Mr. Casey.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I agree on the labor line. We just had a conversation or an email exchange today with someone in the community who wanted to do just that, that they are making homemade masks, and they wanted to take them down to the labor line. We think that's a great idea. Hendry's Beach is a county beach. It's the county parking lot. Observations are somewhat the eye of the beholder. And so I don't want to state anything as fact. We clearly, we are monitoring our beaches and other places very carefully and parks and that sort of stuff. There have been times, especially on the weekend, where the parking lots are very full. And so that just intuitively seems concerning. But as we have observations on the beach, either with our park rangers or with key staff who are just kind of out and trying to monitor, we see people, for the most part, still behaving responsibly when they're out in those public arenas. We asked the question at a call with the county about closing the trails in the beaches, and they're kind of of the similar mindset right now of the community really needs to step up and be responsible about this, but we would like to keep them as accessible for the competing public health need of being able to get some fresh air. So we continue to monitor. That's why we keep adjusting where we see abuses that is inappropriate. That's why we changed our messaging about group activities, to try to message no group activities. That's why we've had to close down some of the barbecue and picnic areas because we saw people coming together. So we continue to monitor closely, and I really ask the community to use them responsibly so we don't have to get to the point where we have to try to close our parks or our beaches.
Ms. Sneddon, then Mr. Gutierrez, and then Mr. Friedman with questions. Go ahead, Ms. Sneddon.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Casey, just a couple of quick questions for you about travel on the weekends. Are we still a destination location? How are the hotels? Are we getting more people coming? I think that was one of the questions with the trails. If we have trails open and beaches open, are we a magnet for people congregating? And just if you could speak to that. And then I'll just ask my second question now for the public. So as things are rapidly changing, so say the boat launch closing, where's the best place for the public to get that up-to-date information on things that we might not be discussing fully at council, but that we know are happening at the city? And thank you for all that you're doing.
Yes, thank you. Two good questions. We have not seen us being a weekend regional destination of people traveling. I can't say that definitively, but we don't see a spike in hotel stays. You certainly don't see the freeway very crowded. The freeway is empty on weekends. What our observation is, and again, this is just us trying to pay attention really close because we are trying to manage this as best we can, is that a lot of people are able to telecommute from home during the week. And so there still is kind of a weekday pattern of people working and then wanting to get out on the weekends. So we think it's locals who are getting out on the weekends and just wanting to stretch their legs and stuff. And we're encouraging them, do that around your own neighborhood, and let's not put that concentration on the comfortable destinations that we all love dearly in Santa Barbara. And so I think that's what we're seeing, less so than people coming from a long way away. The boat ranch was different. The boat launch, we were getting phone calls, literally from people from hundreds of miles away, saying, are you open? We want to come down. And that's when we said, yikes, that's not just local. That's not what we want to see.
Thank you.
And then Ms. Sneddon did ask about the place to get information. So our website is full of information that's related to the city. And then, of course, public health, publichealthSBC.org is all about county. Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. I apologize. It's hard to keep up with all the information. It is changing quickly. And so I appreciate the challenge, especially in a world where our media is very diverse and we're all getting information differently. We put out a couple of things twice a week. We put out a city newsletter twice a week. Go on our website and sign up for it. It'll just come in your inbox, and we're pushing a lot of information out on that. We're pushing information out through press releases, and so it does get picked up in the press. But again, if you haven't checked it in a day, it gets overblown by other updates. And then the county is doing daily updates as well through their press conferences at 4:30, where they're giving updated data on testing, number of people infected, and that sort of stuff. And so the county website is also very informative. So our city website has a dedicated page to this, so that is a good place to check if you're not seeing things in the media. We also do a lot through signage to get it out on the street itself. You'll notice when we wanted to message no group activities, we went out and put fresh new signs all around our parks so that as people approached the parks, they got that directly. And so we thought that was effective.
But Councilmember Oscar Gutierrez, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I got a comment from a resident saying that this online meeting wasn't posted on our website. So if you could look into that and make sure that it's posted on the front page above the fold, so to speak, that'd be much appreciated. My second, well, yeah, my second question is, when it comes to the boat ramp and its closure, is there some way we can have it so that a resident can show their ID to prove that they're a resident of at least the county of Santa Barbara and have it so that it can be limited to two to three people per boat? So we know that they're not just going out to go hang out on a boat. But a lot of people in our city depend on the ability to be able to fish to feed their families, especially now since a lot of them have lost their jobs. So I feel like we're really going to disservice to a lot of our residents if we don't allow them some sort of access to the boat ranch.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Oscar Gutierrez. We've heard that. We've heard that from when we closed the boat launch ramp, about that. Mr. Klon can chime in on the legality of trying to limit it to county-only residents. We're not sure we can do that. I think the only area, and it's not something we recommend, again, we're trying to manage this crisis in the best way possible, and so staff is not recommending this. But on the boat launch ramp, I think one option if council really wanted to ask us to reconsider would be to have it open during the weekday, but not on the weekends. And again, just hoping that that might take the regional component out of it and have it be a little more local-focused. And so that's something we've talked about. We're not super comfortable about it, but I think that's where, if you wanted us to loosen up a little bit on the boat launch, that's what we would recommend you go.
Before we go to Mr. Klon, Mr. Casey, I'm remembering our waterfront director, Mr. Wiltshire, saying that someone could apply for an exemption. Like, maybe they could go and say that they were fishing for food as a food source. Does that sound right?
There's Mr. Wiltshire. I'll let him chime in.
Mr. Wiltshire, thank you.
Yeah, good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. Can you hear me all right?
Speak up a little.
Yes, yes. Yeah, with regards to exemptions, and as Mr. Casey mentioned, this was really in response last week to overwhelming number of calls from everywhere, from San Diego to Morro Bay for people looking to use our launch ramp. So we were looking for a way to kind of limit that influx that we're just not capable of handling while kind of being within the spirit of social distancing. We also didn't want to limit essential business operations and commercial fishing. And so as far as commercial fishing operations, we did leave it open. And that was based on a call to Harbor Patrol. And that typically is somebody who has a commercial boat registration and commercial fishing license through California Department of Fish and Wildlife. So that still holds as of now, and as of now, our boat launch is closed. Mr. Casey mentioned that we are amenable to some sort of change going forward, but I'd really like to caution that if we are the only launch ramp open in Southern California, it's hard to predict if there's going to be a demand, but it would be inevitable that there'd be some level of increased demand for our launch ramp.
Mr. Wiltshire, thank you very much. And Mr. Klon, you have a legal point of view?
I do. Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Can you hear me? I can't hear myself. It's unusual. Uh I can't hear myself. It's uh unusual. The um-
Little louder.
The public trust doctrine would generally prevent the city from blocking off access to the coast. The California Coastal Commission has recognized the emergency situation with COVID nineteen and has allowed us to uh apply for nondiscriminatory uh restrictions on access. It would be rational to do as we're doing and permit commercial fishers or anglers access to the water. Uh it would not be rational to exclude non-Santa Barbara residents from use of the ramp.
And and as Mr. Wiltshire said, our concern then is we're the only boat lawn tramp open in Southern California from Morro Bay down to San Diego. Uh and the concern is that the word gets out, even if it's just a weekday opening, that we are the only game uh in the entire Southern California area, so we're concerned about that.
We've had a good discussion about the Boat Launch, and at the end of this session, we can give our opinion on it. I I think we should be cautious and not invite people to come into our area in general.
And then if I if I could, Madam Mayor, in response to the other question from Mr. Oscar Gutierrez, if I could ask Ms. Gorman to chime in on what we've done just from a public noticing standpoint, I want to be really clear that we did follow good procedures there.
Certainly, um Madam Mayor and council members, the um city did post this agenda with the instructions on how to log in and how to participate in this time of social distancing in the usual methods, including having it posted on the city's homepage, as well as on the city council um agendas, meetings, and videos page. And additionally, we did have a press release.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. Mr. Casey?
If there's no other questions for me, oh, never mind. I see Mr. Friedman.
Mr. Friedman.
Thank you, uh Madam Mayor. This is actually going back to the Boat Launch. Um Councilman Gutierrez asked the questions that uh that I had in regards of whether we could close it to locals, but I do have another question, and it came from a public comment earlier about appointments. And would it be possible if we did say a uh Monday through Thursday by appointment, but we gave the first hour or whatever it is that our locals could come in, and we only have a certain number of appointments per day, but our local residents are allowed to call in first? Um could we do something like that?
Um Mr. Wiltshire is on, but what I think I heard the city attorney say, it has to be nondiscriminatory, so that's being discriminating. Uh maybe I got it wrong. Mr. Wiltshire, you first, and then I see Mr. Klon. Go ahead.
Yeah, Mayor Maria, Councilmember Friedman. Um I I won't speak to the legal issue, but just from an administrative issue point of view, it it'd be tough to create another layer when we're trying to limit staff and people contact. And so this really would, if we're making appointments and checking identification and having to send staff down to the boat ramp and really analyze these on a one-by-one occurrence, it it could potentially create a situation that we're trying to avoid. And so I'm I'm more than amenable to finding something where we can keep both our staff kind of contact minimized with a number of people using the boat ramp and minimizing the amount of people at the boat ramp. How we do that, I don't know, but I don't want to create ambiguity in an administrative task of needing to check every boat before it goes out.
Uh that that kind of answers my question. I was following up on the public comment earlier, and the other questions were already answered in regards to locals' preference. Thank you.
Thanks. It looks like Ms. Harmon has a question. Go ahead.
Madam Mayor, no, I just, are we um are we giving opinions about the Boat Launch issue now, or we're not doing that? I I don't know if I should chime in.
I'm hoping you'll phrase it as a question. There are questions, yeah. At at the end, after Ms. Doubles talks and and Ms. Johnson has a presentation about economic hardship, then we'll have a discussion.
Okay. I don't have a question. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, okay. It looks like we're ready to move on to the next.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I'll now ask Ms. Doubles to log in and uh give you an update on the housing issues. After her, we'll have Police Chief Lori Luna talk about police, and then we'll have Sam Edelman about Farmers Market. And then I'll wrap up with some of the economic stuff and happy to answer more questions or or get into comments at that time.
Thank you, Mr. Casey. Ms. Doubles, you're on.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and council members. Thank you so much for having me back today to provide you an update on our homeless neighbors. Um I'd like to go ahead and advance the screen, and I'll start talking about our uh positive news that has happened since I was here before in the uh Showers of Blessing, which uh I was really glad to hear Ken Ralph call in, um the executive director. And uh we were able to work out and graciously, the city, uh thank you to the council and to City Administrator Paul Casey, was able to um open Pershing Park for uh schedules for showers. Right now, Showers of Blessings are doing uh five days a week. Um what I have up here on the screen actually is for the Santa Barbara schedule. Um on Tuesdays and Fridays, they are at Pershing Park um from eleven AM to two PM. And on Wednesdays, um SB Act, one of our providers that um helps with the collaborative, has ac- actually found a spot over at Girls Inc., which uh was has been very useful as well in that area. And Wednesdays, they are also there from eleven AM to two PM as well. And then on Mondays, they are out in Isla Vista from two to five PM. Um and Thursdays, they are out in Golita from ten to one PM. Um those schedules actually are posted online um at the Santa Barbara County Housing and Community Development webpage under Homelessness Assistance. Um we have a ongoing update uh on that page for all of our providers, as well as it has maps with the handwashing stations and the restrooms that are open. Um it has a CDC guidance that have been issued. It's a very resourceful site that I would love to um mention that to everybody to be able to use if needed. Um also on that site, they still are calling for any volunteers, so um they will have to go through a search process. Um our city EOC is actually helping to man the lines also on that for the volunteers to call in. But there's an application that can be downloaded and filled in uh on that webpage as well. Um so I'll move on to CDC guidance on our encampments. I just want to bring this up to reiterate to um the public as well, but also to council, that um back on March twenty-second, we received guidance from the state CDC that um actually spoke to encampments, and um they advise that clearing encampments can cause people to disperse throughout the community and break connections with their service providers. This in turn increases the potential for the spread of the virus as well. So the reason that that can actually break those contacts with their case managers and service managers is be um is because um they have cell phones that unfortunately are not able to be um charged right now. The way that they are usually able to connect with their case managers is by way of cellphone. So if they don't have a cellphone to do so because it's not charged, the case manager knows that they usually are at a certain location. If we were to disperse them from that location, um they may actually disrupt that um connection with their case managers as well. Uh moving on to our service providers update, I just wanted to really give a very heartfelt thank you to all of our service providers right now. This is a difficult time. They have very difficult jobs. The amount of collaboration that we have on our calls and certain providers stepping up to help other providers, and it's just amazing, and I just really want to give them a big thank you for that. Uh Food Bank has actually stepped up and has added um a lot more distribution sites. They're working directly with a lot of our service providers to make sure that they can provide food. As well as CityNet is still providing street outreach, um as well as the Home for Good Street Outreach Crew. Home for Good is also distributing um uh cellphone, solar cellphone chargers when they're needed, and uh also hygiene kits. So that's something that's very useful, as well as trying to educate our um encampments of social distancing protocols and best uh practices to hopefully stay as safe as possible out there. Our Heaps uh our Heap Santa Barbara Connect Home Team, they are um still i- in operation of the project that we have, uh serving the most vulnerable. They have actually stepped up to try to um provide bridge housing as much as possible to um the most vulnerable um individuals, which typically right now, the FEMA has actually developed a a certain category for those being sixty-five years of age and older. Or and or if they have um certain um medical or health conditions that has been um labeled as very risky for this virus, um of catching the virus. The other um things I wanted to mention was our PATH Rescue Mission Transition House, uh New Beginning Safe Parking Programs. They are all operational. Um they are doing their best to serve our homeless population in this crisis. Um doing a very good job, and they're working directly with our um county and public health uh teams to make sure they're uh updated um regularly on, you know, individuals. Um I'd like to also report that as of right now, we've actually not had any positive tests in any of our shelters here in Santa Barbara, so that is very good news. We also are, um some of our providers are actually even at their own expense um providing uh rooms or, you know, services for individuals that they have that to make sure that they are protected as much as possible. Um people that have very special medical needs that need to be um in a a more protective situation right now. Um the other thing is, is that uh some of their case management, their therapy sessions, um the these services are still taking place, some remotely at this point, but they are still receiving a lot of good services out there. Um I'm I'll move on to our state and county objectives. Um we have definitely had a lot of different advice on uh how to best handle the situation, as well as um I know we've been trying to keep up with uh all a lot of other jurisdictions, especially San Francisco area, Los Angeles, to try to to learn from what has um happened and how they've uh dealt with situations. And so some of the county's objectives have changed a little, but um they've kind of come down to four that um I just want to mention. Um the first one is to prevent and mitigate impacts to unsheltered through support centers and outreach. Um that's reestablishing access to the showers, which we've done, device charging, food, making sure food is available, and also hygiene supplies. Um second, there they would like to establish non-congregate sheltering for the highest-risk individuals. Those are the individuals that I just spoke of that are sixty-five plus or have medical conditions that are are worrisome. And non-congregate sheltering is basically trying to um get them into units such as a motel or hotel room to try to provide them um protection that way. Uh also, number three, they'd like to uh sustain their shelter capacity for persons not experiencing system symptoms, sorry, and um that's kind of changed a little bit in that we were very eagerly trying to find um new type of shelter situations where we could expand sheltering and bring more people in off the streets. Um right now, um realistically, that is um a very tall order. We've been trying to find sites throughout the city to um see if we could establish something like that. Uh the city uh administrator and um has basically uh offered certain sites to see if those would be um able to be used, and unfortunately hasn't, we haven't had the right situation just yet to come up with that. I know that the county is still very actively working to find uh a possible new shelter. But um what we are kind of leaning towards at this point is because it is very realistic to say that a lot of our unsheltered individuals will remain unsheltered. And the guidance from the state has actually been that um that may be certainly okay because they are spread out in their encampments. That's one reason, though, we're not supposed to remove those encampments is because it provides them the safe distancing protocols that um more so even than bringing them into a congregate care situation. So as long as we can work on provide, making sure to provide these si- essential needs and goods to them, that is becoming a better, almost a better situation. Um we certainly are still trying to find a site uh for an expansion of shelter. Um they do currently have a sh- a site at Santa Maria High School in the North County. Um they have capacity up there for seventy-one. Um and that was just recently um taken over in operations, changed over to Good Sam that's uh actually running those operations up there. Um so we also have um some good screening tools. And they frequently are collaborating and checking in on individuals as well. And number four, they um are wanting to enhance the homeless prevention and housing activities through increased funding for rental assistance and supportive services. One of those ways is that today they are actually releasing the NOFA, a Notice of Funding Availability, for HHAP funding, which is um it stands for Homeless Housing Assistance and Prevention Program. And uh there's approximately over one million dollars in funding that can go to these, you know, type of activities of rapid rehousing or pro- providing rental assistance. Um and so that is being opened for applications um to be uh accepted today. Um also, they are trying to use um the state and local eviction moratoriums to help with prevention of homelessness, um and those I think have been already spoke to in previously. Um and then also, uh just as uh Elizabeth Stotts just mentioned not too long ago, we are are getting additional CDVG funding. Um it it was recently passed under the Carers Act from the federal government. Um and right now, there will be over two-point-six million across our county jurisdictions. Um of course, ours ours is going to be roughly five-hundred-and-thirty thousand, but overall jurisdictions here in the county, it will be approximately two-point-six million. Um so and then I wanted to talk a little bit about um our governor's new project Room Key Initiative. This just recently came out in the last few days, and um what this is actually about is that um the governor has secured approval from FEMA to um have seventy-five percent of a cost-share model on trying to secure motel and hotel rooms for um the possibility of isolating uh individuals that are more susceptible to the virus or who have maybe tested positive. Um their initial goal uh was for fifteen thousand rooms to se- to secure fifteen thousand rooms. And um they would be able to build that isolation capacity that way by having that many rooms. Um the state has said that they would be including wraparound services, um all the needs, basically meals, security and custodial services, laundries, facilities. Um but and I just wanted to give you an update as of today. Um they have six-thousand-eight-hundred-and-sixty-seven hotel and motel rooms that they have actually secured throughout California. And eight-hundred-and-sixty-nine individuals that are considered to be higher risk for the virus- for the virus have actually been moved off the street into some of those rooms. The interesting news about that program is that they are looking to possibly have this as more of a future option as well. Some of the agreements that they have actually made with hotels and motels, some of them have options for the state to possibly purchase those properties and use them in the future. So they're looking for the future as well as the emergency right now, the crisis. I think that that, oh, I did want to also give a, provide an update on the restrooms. The, we had identified five restrooms with our service providers, our outreach providers, that would be deemed as really essential to provide twenty-four-seven operations scheduling. And we are actively working on that with the county right now to identify how we can get that done. There's a lot of competition for funding. And I just wanted to put out kind of a request to the public too, and our homeless population, that there has been a lot of misuse in our restrooms and security issues. And so if that can be put out there, that, you know, we would love to be able to provide this essential service to our community. But we really need some help in making sure to keep our restrooms safe and usable. It is also an expanded service for the city. It's not something that we typically do or have budgeted for. So trying to procure or get supplies to do these necessary cleanings and sanitations and provide that security is definitely being looked at as well, how we best could do that. So that's an update on that as well. So that is all I have for now. If you guys have any questions, I'm here for any question, to answer any questions.
Thanks, Ms. Doubles. And I know you worked all weekend. You and I were on the phone together looking for locations for a South County shelter. And so for people who don't know, our staff, really, they're on duty every day, all day. Ms. Harmon, you have a question for Ms. Doubles?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you so much, Ms. Doubles. I just have, you answered almost everything. Thank you so much. But I just have a couple of questions that I've received from community members. So I wanted to put them to you in hopes of just getting sort of a clear answer for folks about what they should do. Truthfully, I don't know. And the first is related to quarantine. So I'm not talking about our houseless neighbors who are themselves experiencing symptoms of COVID- nineteen or some other illness, but folks that may have been exposed to a friend or a neighbor or whomever who has tested positive. What should those people who are advised to go into quarantine do? Are there hotel rooms available for them or motel rooms available for them? Is there anything specific within this universe of programs that you articulated for those people?
Sure, Madam Mayor and Councilmember Harmon. Yeah, actually, I spoke with the county about that, county public health about that as well today. And what their position is on that is that, and it depends on who has given that direction to quarantine. If it comes from a public health medical provider, then they would be also taking the precautions of, you know, possibly removing and testing and maybe even isolating in a room. But if this is just something that they have found that they've been, you know, exposed to, and yet maybe they don't know where to go, the public health advisor was saying that the best thing for them to do would be to contact their primary health caregiver, their own doctor, first, and explain the symptoms, you know, go in, get, you know, maybe, or just at least to get ahold of them and tell them their issue. And then usually by that, the public or the provider will usually try to screen to see if it's something that is definitely an issue. If that were to be the case, they would actually either start to test them or also get in touch with public health that may be able to assist with an isolation situation in a motel or hotel room. So one thing that was interesting when I spoke with him today was that he was, he was talking about their, the county public health website has a new screening tool that is made by Apple, in conjunction with Apple, and really, really good screening tool. I know that some of our individuals, our homeless individuals don't have access, but maybe their case managers or provide, you know, service providers could actually help in that. But there is a screening tool that's accessible out there as well.
Okay, thank you. And then my final question is related to encamp, I guess, to encampments. And I appreciate you sharing with us the guidance is not to clear them, nor is it to move forward with congregate settings. But I've been getting a lot of suggestion that we maybe pick a parking lot so that we can say one tent here and then distance from the next tent. The feedback I'm getting from people is that there's a fear that within those encampments, people are too, too close together. And I'm wondering if you can just respond to that idea in general, whether that's something that the county is pursuing, whether that is actually not in line with guidelines? Just sort of your response so that I can, you know, we can use that to, to share with our constituents.
Sure, Madam Mayor and Councilmember Harmon, yes. Actually, that is against the guidance right now. So what that would actually be doing is disrupting the encampments that they're in, moving them into more closer distancing, believe it or not. But yeah, in, in one whole area, you're putting that kind of congregate setting, just bringing them all together, even if it is distanced off. We're pretty much better off to keep them where they are rather than disrupting that encampment and having them move, you know, and possibly, you know, that, that actually helps to, the possibility of spreading if, if somebody were to be positive, so.
Okay, thank you so much. Thanks, Madam Mayor.
Sure.
Any other questions for Ms. Doubles before we move on to the police chief? Thank you, Ms. Doubles.
Thank you.
And we'll call forward the chief. Thanks, Chief Luno.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and City Council Members. I'm Lori Luno, your Chief of Police. This pandemic highlights the broadness and the diversity of our policing profession for sure. And I'm with all of you. I've never seen anything like this in thirty-one and a half years. But I'm reminded that our police officers are trained for the unexpected. And we are trained to achieve excellence. And I just want to reinforce that we are here with you all to get through this. We're doing our best to keep a very visible presence in the community to ensure people feel safe. And I just have to acknowledge all my police department employees. I'm humbled by their commitment to come to work. They're super engaged and motivated and doing quite well. So in saying that, this is uncharted territory. So we are heeding the advice of experts, national, state level, the advice from the CDC and the County Health Department through our journey. We're learning from other agencies like New York City and Detroit, who are seeing twenty percent and seventeen percent of their workforce impacted by the COVID virus or family members, which has taken them out of work. So what we are doing is aligning very closely with our prior department's disease control expert. And we work together on a comprehensive safety plan that we put in place about a month ago. Our county has seen seven law enforcement employees who have tested positive for COVID- nineteen. One of those are ours. But I think it shows the fact that we have been able to keep that exposure down to a minimum, that our guidelines and safety practices are working. Our officers start the day with a bleach foot dip, or I should say a shoe dip. They take their temperatures to come into the building, and we've got them isolated in other workplaces. So if they do get exposed in the community, they're not infecting the rest of the department because we need to continue to function. But we do recognize that every interaction we have with somebody that has COVID- nineteen, it may also threaten our community as a whole. So we are very conscientious of that. And as a result, we reduced our in-service, in-person service delivery model right away. So we've been encouraging crime reporting over the phone or online. Our online reporting has Spanish options, and we've now expanded that to contain also suspect information where it didn't before. We closed our front counter, but there are a couple of things that we have to do in person, like some of our two-ninety registrants as well as tow releases. So we are here to provide the services that are necessary for our community. And we are responding to emergency and in-progress radio calls, ensuring that we're keeping the community safe. Our calls of service are still coming in. Initially, we saw about a forty percent decrease, and things are starting to pick up. And we're seeing them at about ten percent less than normal. And we haven't noticed any big trends. They're kind of all over the place. And, you know, we've had a couple of traffic collisions where you think, okay, people aren't supposed to be driving, but we think that people are a little distracted by not seeing the queues of other traffic or by things that they may be worried about at this time. Our stance is to inform and educate the public about the current restrictions, or I'm sorry, restrictions, and encouraging individuals to comply with the state and local emergency health directives. We are not encouraging the community to call nine-one-one to report violations of social distancing. Our non-emergency number, which is eight-oh-five-eight-two-eight-nine-zero-zero, is the best to report concerns over groups of people gathering. We learned today that the judicial body that oversees the state of California has invoked their emergency powers, and they're going to temporarily eliminate bail for people arrested and those that are charged with lower-level offenses. So we anticipate a little crime uptick. We have several parolees that were provided an early release due to some of the COVID responses. And unfortunately, the probation department and parole departments are supervising remotely because of their concerns. So we feel it's vital for us to show a presence. And as a result, we shifted some of our resources to seven days a week to deal with some of our violent crime issues and concerns we anticipate. And our goal is to prevent and disrupt some of the effort. The teams are using analytical and intelligence gathering methods for tracking and disrupting the violence. Like I said, they're covering seven days a week and are using a variety of strategies to identify and monitor the crime. And those are the crimes that we feel have a most significant impact for our community. In addition, we have identified two of our officers that are Spanish speakers to provide some additional community outreach to our Spanish-speaking community. They're making contact in person, abiding by social distancing. But our social media posts are increasing, and we will incorporate some radio broadcasts. But each and every one of our officers is continuing to provide that community outreach to ensure our people are feeling safe and that they know the latest information as it's passed on to us. One of the trends that most cities are seeing across the nation is an increase in domestic violence, crime, and family violence as a whole. I'm happy to report we haven't seen those statistics increase. However, I very much know it's one of those crimes of power and control. Just because we're not seeing it reported, we understand that the violence may be there, and somebody may not be in a position to call or ask for that help. So we are in concert with the District Attorney's Office in asking people if they see something, say something, and check on their friends any way they can, except in person, to ensure their safety if they have some concerns that they're in some situations that they may not be able to ask for help. We can still facilitate emergency protective orders. We continue to partner with our community organizations for victim services. Domestic Violence Solutions is still offering counseling through their twenty-four-hour crisis hotline. They do have some short-term lodging options should victims need help. And in addition, our district attorney, victim, witness advocates are a great resource for assistance as well. And one of the last things that I want to share, I haven't heard any reported cases in town here, but it's definitely sweeping across the nation. Unfortunately, every time we have a situation that creates fear in the community, we have people trying to take advantage of that. So there are numerous phishing scams that have been reported by our Secret Service that incorporate possible fraudulent testing equipment or supplies, ineffective safety equipment, and also unemployment scams as well. So we recommend everybody research things well. If something seems too good to be true, it probably is. And again, remind people to be careful releasing any personal information via email or to anybody they don't know is from a legitimate service provider. And with that, I will end and make myself available for questions.
Thank you so much. Are there questions for the chief from our city council members? Okay, I don't see anyone, so we'll move on to the next. Chief, thank you, and thank your staff and our police force for doing such a good job.
Thank you, Mayor.
So, Mr. Edelman, I think we've had you on hold all afternoon long. Really grateful, and you just go ahead and let us know what's going on at the Farmers Market Association and how you're responding to the, to providing food during a pandemic.
Well, thank you. I really appreciate the invitation to come here today and speak. We've been taking a lot of preventative measures, sort of as we have continued to monitor the situation. We've really been working continuously to maintain a safe and healthy food resource for the community. Our safety protocols have really continued to evolve as we've been going through this process. We've been in very close contact with other market operators across the state of California, particularly those that are in sort of high-volume locations and really tried to work on best practices in conjunction with all the ongoing health department requirements. We've been working closely with the Santa Barbara Environmental Health Department, which has included site visits the last two weeks that have gone very well, and really just trying to focus on maintaining our social distancing and really transforming our entire environment from what was a primary shopping outlet and secondary social outlet to solely an essential grocery experience. So basically, we're really trying to get the community to come to the market, shop efficiently, and leave. We have a number of protocol in place for our farmers and the community, a lot of recommendations, specifically on the farmer's side. Things like food sampling is strictly prohibited at this time. We have handwashing protocol in place for all of our farmers. We have an ongoing contract with Marlboro for our high-volume markets. So they are actually delivering handwashing stations. They're being placed all over the market in prominent locations, easy access both for our farmers but primarily for our customers. We have signs prominently placed at every market booth, encouraging our customers not to touch what they're not going to purchase and to maintain that social distancing. We've completely revamped, or we're in the process of completely revamping, our currency collection system where we're requiring farmers to not touch any product or produce and touch any cash or currency at the market. We have a high-volume booth for We have a high-volume booth where we have a single individual solely responsible for handling the cash at the market location. And then with regards to six-foot distancing, anyone that's visited the market over the last few weeks has noticed drastic changes in our overall layout and structure. Each of our market booths are positioned, our tables are positioned back as far as possible to widen the rows out as much as possible. And each individual booth has been roped off. So it maintains adequate spacing within the individual booths themselves. So we are actually drawing six-foot distancing lines throughout our entire market and every market seller's booth each morning of the market is on. We're requiring all of our farmers to wear gloves while they work and change gloves during any exchange with cash and product. And we will be also adding the mask requirement to the protocol, which is new. So we're going to be requiring all of our sellers in the market to be requiring masks. I actually was on the phone call with the health department during this conference about an hour and a half ago, talking about the use of masks in our market, what our plans were. And while it doesn't seem like it's specifically required for our markets, we are still going to take that as an extra initiative. We've really been trying to stay ahead of the curve with regards to our safety protocol as we've been moving forward. Things like all leafy greens, all small items at market were required to be pre-bagged by our sellers and really to limit the amount of produce on display and simple things like not eating in their market booths and making sure to wash hands regularly. We're really sort of promoting those practices as much as possible. We're going to, our markets have been fairly diminished over the last couple of weeks. We've seen a major decline in customer attendance, which is good because people are sticking to the mandates and staying indoors. And people that used to send, you know, five people to a farmer's market are just sending a single person. So that's been a major stride. We haven't seen massive crowds where there's been completely condensed rows throughout the market, but we are going to be starting additional crowd control measures at our market locations, which will include our downtown Saturday market. We are going to be sealing off the entrances at Saturday, starting this week. I will have taped-off distancing rows for people to enter and exit the market, just to ensure a consistent flow. This took place at the Santa Monica Market this past week and they let in about 200 customers at a time. We're going to probably start and shoot for about the 150 mark, which would be about two customers per market booth at a time throughout our market. We seem like that might be a decent balance. And just to get an idea of how big the booths are, the average booth space in a market is about 22 feet. So that will allow for more than adequate distance throughout our market space. And we're going to kind of continue to evaluate that as we move forward. There's no set amount of people that are kind of allowed in the market at one time, but we're going to really closely monitor that. That's not been a request that's been made of us by the health department at this time. Upon both our visits, the spacing seemed pretty adequate from their perspective, but it's just sort of another initiative we're going to take as we move forward. We're also going to be working on the same type of protocol for our Tuesday market downtown. It's a little bit more complicated because we're on open streets and with the access corridors. So I reached out to individuals at the city of Santa Barbara to kind of work on that and help us work through some mitigation plans to be able to do that at the market in the event that it gets too busy. Obviously, a day like today, it's raining outside and the market's well dispersed and it's not an issue. We've been spreading our farmers out into various locations to allow for us as much spacing during market as possible. And really just trying to stay ahead of the curve as much as possible. You know, I know just how appreciative the community has been to continue to have access to this essential food resource. And we're really working hard every day to ensure the health and safety of our community. We are open to any directive that our health department provides. We'll abide by instantly as well as our local and state governments. So we're really just trying to follow protocol and just appreciative to be up and running and open to be able to continue to provide this service. Any questions?
Well, you have focused on Santa Barbara area. Can you tell our viewers, because people outside of Santa Barbara watch, all of your markets are operating?
All six of our farmers' markets are operating. Obviously, our Saturday market is our most heavily attended market. Our Tuesday market is secondary, but all six of them are still operating. And we've made these protocol changes at all of our six weekly markets. Yes.
Very good. We'll go to Ms. Sneddon with a question for Sam Edelman, executive director of the, or you're called the manager of the Farmers Market.
Yeah, it's fine, general manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Edelman. I had a question about, are there any moves to go towards delivery or curbside pickup? I know I have a neighbor friend who works at a farmer's market stand and she's been delivering a box to me weekly. It's been a great service, and is there anything like that through the market that might be available?
We have discussed that internally. We are not quite ready to go that direction. It takes a lot of infrastructure. We have a very, very limited staff for the size of operation that we are running. So we're really focused on our protocol measures onsite. There are a large number of individuals that are doing that currently as separate businesses that are supporting local farms. Some are farmers specifically and others that have been in business for a long time doing that and some that have just started revamping because of the need. Actually, those companies have expanded exponentially, which is great, and it still gives the farmers an outlet. So at this time, we're not planning on doing that, but those are ongoing discussions that we are having internally.
Okay, well, thank you. Such an important service for our community and thank you for taking the safety precautions. And we've gotten a lot of emails about it and it really helps us support the market staying open and being safe. Thank you.
Thank you. And I would be happy to visit with anybody at market site. I'm there all the time. I'm pretty much onsite every market day when I'm available, just to make sure everything is going through and be happy to visit with anybody onsite.
Thank you.
I've seen you doing the hard work too, like at Coast Village Road on Friday mornings. You're actually putting up the fencing and such. So you're on the ground with your job, Mr. Edelman.
A little bit, thank you.
Any other questions from our city council members? Good. And having you on reminds us to eat our vegetables, so thanks so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Edelman, we'll let you go. Thank you. Okay. And who is next? Mr. Casey?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll wrap up here. We've got staff in the background available to come online to answer any questions that you might have. So it has come up. It's certainly something in the forefront of my mind is the projected financial impact of the city of this disaster. And it's going to be very significant. I don't have numbers for you today. We continue to crunch the numbers. We have to make assumptions, especially on sales tax, because we don't get that in a timely manner. So working with our sales tax consultant to evaluate what we think the trends are and the expectations are. But we fully expect to take a substantial hit in our sales tax revenue, a very substantial hit on our transient occupancy tax. Hotels have essentially shut down and we don't know for the duration how long that will be. We've also lost a lot of revenue in our department fees and revenues. Downtown parking is not collecting any revenues from our parking lots, same with the waterfront department. Parks and Recreation aren't renting any facilities, which is a really important revenue source for them. So there's just a number of department revenues that are hitting us hard as well. We have a bullet there, state and federal assistance anticipated. I think we should put a question mark on the end of that. We hope there will be some assistance. There hasn't been to date. The federal legislation that was passed focused on cities of greater than 500,000 in population. They did send some money to the states, but it's up to the states about how they're going to distribute that money. So we don't know if we'll see anything. We have been in constant contact with our federal and state legislative representatives to let them know the substantive financial hit we are getting. As we lose revenues, while we have to provide critical essential services as well, and so that's our issue. But it is something we are already trying to manage internally. As you are aware, we had to let many of our hourly employees formally go. These are our parking lot attendants or our recreation specialists for programs that we just weren't able to provide them any hours. And so what we did is we gave them official notice that their services aren't needed. And with that official notice, that qualified them to go and apply for unemployment. And so we thought that was important to do that. When we get back up and running, we will certainly reach out to them and hope that they will come back and be interested to continue to work for us. But that was not an easy decision. We are a service organization. We're a people organization. That's most of what we do is services provided by employees. And so our employees are extremely important to us. These hourly employees really supplemented the efforts we were able to do. It's just something that we have to manage fiscally as we go through this. We are preparing a budget. It's really unfortunate because it takes months and months to put a budget together. And so we've spent the last six months putting a budget together under the old world scenario. And so when we present you that budget, it is going to be the old world scenario budget. And it's something we're going to have to immediately begin adjusting from. We don't have time in the next week or two to put together a completely new budget based upon the revenue impacts because we don't have a full handle on what they'll be. So we are going to come later in April with the formal kickoff to the budget process. At that point, we will have better idea on the numbers that we're talking about and the magnitude. And it's going to be all hands on deck to figure out how to manage our way through this. It's not going to be easy, and so I don't want to sugarcoat it, but I don't have details for you yet, but it's coming shortly. And then it's something we're just going to have to manage through the entire fiscal year because this is a real challenge and we don't know how long it's going to last. We don't know what the rebound will be. Is it going to be a soft, slow, or just so much uncertainty as we keep going through this? Next slide, please. Just real quick, just to make sure people understand, because Ted, tax day is coming up. But sales tax, the governor did pass an extension to the sales tax and the state payroll tax. There are a lot of nuances to that, so I encourage you to go on to the state of California's website and look for that information. I'm not an expert on it, so I don't want to try to tell you what that is, but there was for especially smaller businesses, some relief. I know that cities are going to the state and saying, hello, sales tax is really important to us. You just kind of undercut us there as well. And so we're trying to work with the state about whether they would be able to make us whole while they kind of defer that payment. So tricky business. Personal and business income tax, it was extended to July 15th. Originally, the state of California extended to June 15th on the filing of your income taxes. And then the federal government said July 15th. So the state recently modified theirs to be July 15th as well. So I believe that's no penalties. You don't have to file a form. And so that gives people some time to get their income taxes in. Property tax payments, though, are due on April 10th. The county treasurer tax clutter has said they will consider penalty waivers if you submit after the tax. I think there are constitutional issues as it relates to education funding that didn't give them the ability to suspend the property tax payments or delay them. Next slide, please. So like I mentioned, we just have two recommendations to council that we talked about two weeks ago. I've already implemented them, so I'm asking your kind of formal approval of them. One is the deferral of the transient occupancy tax for 60 days without penalty at request from hotels. We did this during the Thomas Fire. Not all the hotels took advantage of this, but some did and they felt it was a help to them from a cash flow standpoint. And so we're recommending that we do that again. We have sent them notice. We're just asking for your kind of concurrence to do that. And so it's for the March and April payments. They do no later than June 10th. Could assist up to 69 hotels and lodging establishments. But again, they would need to request it and some do and some don't. We will make the Tourism Business Improvement District payments to visit Santa Barbara and reimburse the general fund once the funds are collected. Because again, this is a deferral of tax. It's not a waiver of the tax. And so trying to keep visit Santa Barbara with some income going because as soon as we get through the other side of the health crisis, we're going to have an economic crisis and we're going to need to jumpstart our economy and getting some, especially just regional tourism for people to come back and be visiting Santa Barbara is going to be important to help our retail, our restaurants, everyone kind of get back on their feet. Next slide, please. And then in the parking area, we did have a bill coming up shortly for people for their parking and business improvement area assessment. The first quarter payment was due in April. Since businesses are shut down and our parking operations are shut down, we are recommending that we waive that first quarter fee, so a complete waiver. It is a loss of revenue to downtown parking of $250,000. But they have reserves in the parking fund and we just think it's only appropriate for businesses who are not up and running not to have to pay that parking assessment. And so we think that's something the city should just go for. Next slide, please. And then just concurrent with that on the parking front, we are recommending that we suspend the monthly and commuter parking permit fee. So people get a monthly or commuter parking fee. We bill them on a monthly basis or whatever. Again, since everything is shut down and the parking lots are free, we're asking that we go ahead and direct staff to refund the parking departments until the downtown parking lots are staffed and the hourly fee collection is back up and running again. Next slide, please. So those are the recommendations. We're looking for your concurrence and happy to answer any questions. But that concludes our presentation.
It looks like Mr. Jordan has a question. Mr. Casey, I'm looking at our council agenda report. So a motion would be the recommendation A, B, C, and D. We do need to do public comment, so Mr. Jordan, let's make this question.
So, Mr. Casey, I'd just like to ask you if there would be a some reason that the city could not extend the TOT deferral for an extra month? Make it 90 days due July 10th rather than June 10th, and it would encompass March, April, and May?
No, there's no reason why we, yes, we could do that.
Okay. Thank you.
Just a policy decision, yep.
Okay, then I'll wait till after questions to make my case. Thanks.
Okay, just so you're saying instead of 60, 90?
I'm saying add another month to it rather than what's listed there as March and April. Add May and make the deferral due date July 10th rather than June 10th.
Understood. Okay, thanks.
Thanks.
Any other questions for Mr. Casey on this particular segment? I don't see anybody, Mr. Casey, jumping up, so we will go to public comment. I think that's the next. So, Mr. Casey, thanks. There's people lined up, I think, Ms. Clerk, to speak their minds?
Yes, Madam Mayor and council member, we do have seven members of the public who have called in. Nobody at this point has raised their hand to speak on this item, although this is the last item. All right, one person has raised their hand. Members of the public that are on, that are still on hold, please indicate by raising your hand that you want to. And let's see if anybody is dropping. Maybe let's just go forward with the people that are remaining, as this is the last.
Please, go ahead.
The last item. All right. Our first speaker, and I'll give you a couple going down here. Our first speaker is going to be Accessible Santa Barbara. And then Anna Marie Gott, then Brian Smith, Elser Granados, Gabe Escobedo, Nancy Shob, and then Roxana Petty. So again, if you did not mean to speak on this when I unmute you, feel free to just let me know that. Okay. Accessible Santa Barbara, I will unmute you. Please turn down the volume on your TV and please unmute yourself. And Accessible Santa Barbara, it looks like you would need to submit a PIN to do this. So we'll go to the next person and come back to you. Next person is Anna Marie Gott. Ms. Gott, I will unmute you. Please turn down your TV and unmute yourself. Thank you. Go ahead.
Good evening. I just want to make sure that you can hear me. Could you please reply? Can anybody hear me?
Yes, yes, Ms. Gott, we can hear you.
Okay, great. Thank you. I apologize. This is a little bit awkward with having to mute myself. The thing that I just really wanted to bring up is that there are two things. First, this has actually two items combined into one, so I'm going to take my full six minutes, which is three minutes per item. The next thing is that I think it's really important that you actually get the PowerPoint presentation from the county of Santa Barbara's Public Health Department. The charts that they actually had today were extraordinarily informative. The presentation that they actually had today was unbelievable in terms of the estimates of the number of people that are social distancing and what those curves actually look like. Right now, if you went to NewsHawk, there is actually an article that they posted. And the charts are actually, the entire presentation actually, PowerPoint presentation is actually on the website, but you cannot download it. If you actually look at it and it had been at the meeting today, they said that anywhere between 40 and 60% of people actually are practicing social distancing with an average of about 50%. And even at 50%, it looks like we should And even at fifty percent, it looks like we should basically be shut down and in our homes until October or November of this year. And I think that this is something that really needs to be discussed at the city council meetings. This information in terms of a forty percent, a forty-five percent, or a fifty or fifty-five percent compliance rate with social distancing makes a huge difference in what our healthcare system is actually going to experience. And how many ventilators we will need? How many people, you know, are going to be ill and in the hospital? And I think that that's something that you should have every single week. And I'm really disappointed that the PowerPoint presentation wasn't actually in this presentation today. Then the next thing is that I don't feel safe. You know, I am going to the market occasionally or having to go to the, go to the post office. And when I do that, there is a substantial number of people that are still not actually practicing social distancing. And I sent you an email.
Ms. Gott, you're at three minutes, I'm gonna give you one more minute to finish your remark.
Cause I took the time to park my car, walk out and take a photo of the barber shops and the restaurants. They're still, you know, more than two weeks after we had the shelter in place and to shut down certain businesses that are not complying with your proclamation. You know, people who go to a barber shop, you know, you're not staying six feet away from them. They're actually having to get extraordinarily close to you for an extended period of time. And I know that police officers and council members and city and county employees have driven up and down both Milfis and State Street. And they had to have seen these shops open. People eating on, you know, on patio furniture right on the sidewalk on Milfis. People.
Ms. Gott, can you please wrap up your remarks? Please wrap up your remarks.
I'm really disconcerted by the fact that these businesses are still operating, and they are still serving customers, some of them with lines out the door. And we don't have a police officer, you know, which I would assume would actually force someone to go ahead and shut down their business or actually comply with, with the proclamation that the city actually went ahead and passed weeks ago. I, I, a phone call, a visit.
Ms. Gott, we're gonna go ahead and cut you off, I'm getting the, the gist of your remarks. Thank you very much.
People from operating. And I'm really disappointed that no one has.
Thank you very much, we'll go on to the next speaker, please.
Okay, our next speaker will be Brian Smith. After Brian Smith, Elsa Granados, Nancy Shob, Roxanna Petty, and then back to Accessible Santa Barbara. Accessible Santa Barbara, we are attempting to send you a message in your, through the app with a PIN to access, if that doesn't work. I'll just let you know what it is, all right. Brian Smith, I don't see that you are still on. If you would like to call back, please go ahead. Ms. Granados, I will call on you next, please go ahead and unmute yourself and turn the volume down on your TV. And go ahead, you are unmuted, Ms. Granados. Ms. Granados, if you do not, she may be a holdover from an earlier item, we'll go ahead and mute her, go to the next person. Nancy Shobey, please state your name and make your comment if you did wish to speak on this item. Ms. Shobey, go ahead, please. Okay, I don't believe Ms. Shobey is there, she may be a holdover also. Ms. Shobey? Nope, I don't think so. Roxanna Petty, I believe you may have been calling in for an earlier item. Also, if you're there, you are now, hi. You're un, you're unmuted, please turn down the volume on your TV and go ahead, you have three minutes, thank you.
Okay, well, I just wanted to say thank you again for all of the information you're providing us as a part of this community. I have a question, and I wonder if that would be possible to bring up. Some of the families that I.
You can ask a question, and we'll answer it when public comment's over, go ahead.
Okay, that's fine. Some of the families that I work with have asked me when Santa Barbara will have testing available for general public that has some of the symptoms, but not all. Just because some of them have been turned away. And as a personal question as well, I'm also curious, so thank you so much for your time, I appreciate it.
Next speaker, please.
Okay, our final speaker is Accessible Santa Barbara. Accessible Santa Barbara, if you can enter in the, the PIN, pound two-two-four, pound. That should give you access, pound two-two-four, pound. We have attempted to message Accessible Santa Barbara both through email and through the app at this point, and he was our last public speaker on the site. So, so I would.
Are we waiting for someone to speak?
We're, yes, if, if Accessible Santa Barbara was going to call in with his PIN, but I'm not sure if he's heard it from me saying it, and we did send it a couple messages. So I would suggest moving on, and if he comes back on, I will let you know.
Okay, if there's no other speakers, we'll close a public comment on this item, correct? Okay. And then, Mr. Casey or someone else on Ms. Shobey's question, from what I'm remembering, what I heard today from Dr. Von Do Reino, Reynoso with County Public Health is that they have testing, enough testing for the tier-one category, which is people who are older, living in a nursing home or displaying symptoms. And then they are starting to have availability for people in tier-two. But I'm not sure of the categories, I can look them up real quick, Mr. Casey, you have a comment?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, unfortunately, I'm not super well-versed on the fine details of the county's testing program. It is County Public Health that leads the testing in the county. And so we would have to refer those questions to there. I know that there has been limits on testing, I think everyone wishes we had a greater capacity to test. I think County Public Health is feeling more hopeful that more testing is coming online in the relatively near future. But we are, from what I understand, in participating in phone calls with them and such, we are not at the point where people who wish to get tested can be tested. They still have a, a winnowing process, like you said, through those tiers of the health professionals in the hospital, the elderly, and other kind of key criteria that they're testing first.
Ms. Shobey, go ahead, if you're still listening, and email me, and I'll get the answer for you, that's the best we can do. Those questions really are best asked to County Public Health. So we'll close a public comment, and we need to vote on what's on the screen right now, which is the actions we would take to make deferrals and et cetera. But this would be the time too to make a general comment on everything that you've heard. So, Mr. Jordan, you're, you're first. Or Mr. Casey, did you have anything else?
I've chatted to more than a handful of local, basically, family-run hotels and motels, and they are all telling me that March was a pretty inconsequential month. April's going to be totally dead, and they're projecting not much business in May. And I would make a request that we change the language in that top paragraph to say ninety days and affecting March, April, and May. That extra twelve percent of any dollar that they do generate, the ability to hold on to that allows them to get back under their mortgage payments, buy food for their families, and get to a point where they're actually generating profits before they have to true up their T O T payment to the city.
Very good, okay, so that's a proposal, and people commenting after him, let me know if you like that idea. Did you have anything else, Mr., okay, no, Ms. Sneddon, go ahead.
I, I would support that proposal, and also, whenever the time comes to, to move or second the staff recommendations here to council, I'd be happy to support that.
Mr. Casey, you have advice about motion making?
Yeah, if I could have Mr. Klon chime in. I, I think the spirit of where you're talking about on the hotels totally makes sense, but I think there's a legal approach that we needed to go about doing, and I'll let Mr. Klon answer that.
Mr. Klon?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I believe we have that extension language in, I wanna say, section four of the resolution. I'm, so I don't believe that the council's action is necessary, although I don't know that it's inconsistent either.
I'm looking at the resolution, what page and paragraph would that be?
I believe it's section four, let me grab it.
So the motion would be then to approve staff recommendation with the change that the months of March, April, and May would be included, and a reference to ninety days instead of sixty, is that right? Mr. Casey or Mr. Klon?
Or Mr. Jordan, correct. And the June tenth date would become July tenth.
And Madam Mayor, again, section four provides that the Finance Director and the City Administrator can extend, can extend the deferral program to May twenty-twenty if, if desired, so if you wanna add time to that, that's the base.
I'd actually, so the way I read that is it has qualifying language to extend it. I'm just asking that you add a month without that qualifying language.
That's perfectly clear, Mr. Jordan, and if it's unclear to any of the other city council members, now is the time to chime in, chime in? Otherwise, I'll ask Mr., well, Ms. Sneddon wanted to make the motion, and I would ask Ms. Sneddon to make the motion to include the changes suggested by Mr. Jordan. Mr. Klon, some advice?
Again, just to be very clear, the, the language already authorizes that if the governor or local orders extend beyond April thirtieth. So what I understand the council to be doing is wanting to extend payments even beyond the stay-at-home orders. Is that correct?
That's what it sounds like, and I guess then we should have a discussion about getting ahead of the governor's orders. Let's start with Ms. Sneddon, since she's first in line.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would defer to Councilmember Jordan to make the motion if he wants that qualifying language removed. I think I'm understanding that even if the governor doesn't extend the orders, that you would like it to be a ninety-day extension of deferring the T O T, which I'm still supportive of, but I'll leave it to Mr. Jordan, whether he wants to make that motion or not, and then I would second it.
Okay, Mr. Jordan, did you have a response? It looks like Ms. Harmon wants to.
That is, that is correct. I'm, I'm, I'm trying not to limit the ninety days based on the extension of either the governor's emergency order or a city's emergency order, but just to give another thirty days for the financial part of that dynamic to get the, the people's feet under them and get their cash flow going again.
Understood, Ms. Harmon, your turn.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I too fully support going to ninety days, but I just have a question about what we're envisioning with this change. If we change this to ninety days, are we saying we then remove that qualifying language? Because part of my concern, you know, we heard from the county this morning, and there are projections that this could go on much, much longer. So I'm wondering if we change it to ninety days and keep in that qualifying language. In the unfortunate event that this extends beyond ninety days and we have to keep this going, it doesn't have to come back to a vote, or is it something that we need? Or I guess my question is, are we removing that qualifying language if we change it to ninety, and should we? Mr. Jordan, Ms. Sneddon, I don't know what your thoughts are, I just wanna understand what the action is.
Let's ask Mr. Klon, please. Mr. Klon?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, the discretionary language for the Finance Director in the second sentence is not important if you're going to extend the time in the first sentence. So I delete that second sentence, which I believe is what Councilmember Harmon was asking about, and then put your hard deadline in the first sentence. So rather than June ten, if it's July ten or whatever it is, put the hard date there.
Okay, Mr. Casey, your opinion?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I, I agree with Mr. Klon, let's just do the, the ninety days, call the months out. If unfortunately, we're, we're still at this, then we come back to council and consider extending it at that point.
Very good. If anyone objects to the changes suggested by Mr. Jordan, now is the time to say so. Otherwise, I'll ask him to make the motion, and it looked like Ms. Sneddon was ready to second. Mr. Klon, you have something else, go ahead.
I wanted to make sure that Councilmember Jordan would accept removing that second sentence as well that begins the Finance Director with the consent of the City Administrator.
Definitely.
That's clear.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
So I'll, I'll move the recommendations to council with the changes in that first paragraph to make it ninety days without penalty or interest, adding the month of May, and with the hard deferred deadline changing to July tenth in section four of the ordinance.
Second.
Okay, that's pretty clear to me. I hope it's clear to the other council members. Mr. Friedman, to the motion?
Yeah, I just have a question, maybe it's after this, I wanted to talk about the, the boat launch ramp. So we can talk about that after this vote?
Hmm, yes, let's talk about it afterwards. After this motion.
Okay, thanks.
So are we ready to take a vote? I don't see anyone else asking to, to speak to the motion, I hope we're all ready to. I hope we're ready to vote, Ms. Clerk.
Okay, this is a motion for item twenty. Motion by Councilmember Jordan, seconded by Councilmember Sneddon, as outlined by Councilmember Jordan. Voting, Councilmember Friedman.
Yes.
Councilmember Harmon.
Yes.
Councilmember Oscar Gutierrez.
Yes.
Councilmember Jordan.
Yes.
Councilmember Alejandra Gutierrez.
Yes.
Mayor Pretend Sneddon.
Yes.
And Mayor Maria.
Aye, that look unanimous, ma'am?
Yes.
So, very good. We should talk about the boat launch now. Mr. Freeman, you wanted to talk about it. I, I'm of the mind that we should trust staff on this and not make any changes to the recommendation, but you go ahead.
I just wanted to, because we had the conversation earlier, so I wanted to see where everyone was on it. I, I do have concerns as we shut things down on the mental health aspect of, of individuals in our community, and, and we saw why tonight, and then there are subsistence fishers there, fishermen there. So if there's a will to do it, I'd, I'd be interested in the, in those, the Monday through Thursday. But I also think we need to be consistent with the rest of the area being that we are the only. the only one. I have those concerns, too. So then I know other council members had brought up possibly doing that. So I just wanted to hear from everyone what their thoughts are. That's all.
The floor is open for your opinions on the boat launch. And I'm assuming Mr. Wiltshire is still available if there's other questions. Ms. Sneddon, you first.
Madam Mayor, I believe I'm going to recuse myself on this item because I do have a boat with permit at East West Beach, and I use that boat launch. So I'm going to not comment or vote on this item.
Mr. Cullon, do you agree that Ms. Sneddon should recuse herself on this one? Or is it her decision?
I haven't had a chance to analyze the question, Mayor, so I would defer to Councilmember Sneddon.
I feel I have a personal interest, so I'm going to choose to. Yeah. Thank you.
Very good. Mr. Gutierrez, your opinion?
Yeah, like I stated earlier, there's a lot of people in our community that feel that being able to fish for their families is an essential need, especially since a lot of them lost their jobs and are having a hard time financially. So I would be willing to support Councilmember Friedman's motion to have it open to a certain degree for the locals that are really needed.
He didn't make a motion, but I'll ask Mr. Wiltshire to come back, and maybe the way to handle this is for you to come back to us, our waterfront director, and Mr. Casey, and fashion something that doesn't attract people from other parts of the state. And how would we make sure that it's somebody who's looking to fish for food and not for recreation? And I just think we're in such a critical time right now where we're trying not to create any kind of socializing, that that's my concern.
Yeah, Madam Mayor.
Or Mr. Casey?
Yeah, I'll just start. I'd like to hear from the rest of council about where people are. We have been evaluating it. It's administratively very burdensome to put a lot of restrictions and ask for certain information from individuals about why they're planning on going out in the water and, you know, are you fishing or are you just going out for pleasure? That's really hard for us to handle. And like we said, the local component, we don't think it's a legal approach either. So the best answer we've come up with, and Mr. Wiltshire can kind of chime in, is if you wanted to, we could try to open it up during the weekday and have it closed on the weekends, and we could closely monitor that if there is a desire from the majority of the council to try to get it back open for some use. We continue to be concerned that you'll be the only boat on tramp open in all of Southern California. And so we are concerned about it becoming a destination. But based upon our analysis so far, that would be our recommendation. If you wanted us to try something, it would be to open it up during the weekdays and have us closely monitor it.
Mr. Wiltshire, you're, go ahead, please.
Yeah, Mayor Maria, council members, I don't have much to add. I agree with Mr. Casey. The preference would be kind of a time-based open and closed, if that's where you want to go. That is much more administratively simple than some sort of checking of individual boaters, and that it would just really create that touch point on every individual launch. So if you wanted to relax it in some way, I would be more supportive of a time-based, Monday through Thursday, Monday through Wednesday, what is appropriate.
Thank you. Ms. Harmon, and then Ms. Alejandra Gutierrez.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I guess I am on the same page as you are on this, Madam Mayor. I think we are asking so much of city staff right now, but to add on this administrative burden, just, I mean, it seems an unnecessary complication. I'm not insensitive, though, to the concerns that council members Friedman and Gutierrez brought up. But, you know, folks can fish still, and I think we are about to go into a period, from what everyone says and everything we're reading, that we're going to have a couple of really, really difficult weeks, and we're just about there. And I think now is not the time to give the impression that we are becoming more lax with our social distancing and with the rules that we've put in place. Maybe in two weeks, when we've hit the peak, we should be having this conversation, and I fully support this being one of the first things we talk about. But I just don't, I don't know how I can get behind an action that gives the impression to our neighbors that, you know, things are really not as serious and we're, you know, feel free to come out. And I just, I think we got to be really careful about that. And so I would support bringing this back as soon as, you know, we have some clarity about when that peak is and really making this a priority. But in this moment, it just doesn't, it doesn't make a lot of sense to me right now. So I won't be supporting taking any action on it today.
Thank you. Mr. Jordan, go ahead.
Madam Mayor, I tend to agree with staff, but only because I think they probably know more what they're talking about than I do. But I can't help but be a little surprised that all of a sudden a boat with four people on it is worse than 30 people at one time going up and down Mason Lane steps or Thousand Steps close to each other and huffing and puffing. So it's not without a little bit of irony to me, as somebody who's spent a little time on a boat, that lots of people on a boat don't really care to go for a walk on the beach or go for a walk down to the beach or walk in the park. The boat is their method of recreation. I agree that the mechanics of trying to figure out who needs food, who's suffering, who's not, is kind of inconsequential to me. It's more of a recreation and a mental health issue with me. But again, I would put my trust in staff and agree to what staff says.
Thanks, and I believe people can still fish off the pier and also from the shoreline. Go ahead, Mr. Gutierrez.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a question for staff. Has there been any issues with congregating on the pier for fishing or on the breakwater or on the beaches at all? And do you see there being an increased risk of people crowding those areas to fish now because of closing down the boat launch? And do you see there being a risk of people trying to launch their boats from the beach itself?
Mr. Wiltshire?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Oscar Gutierrez, we haven't seen overwhelming crowds or any issues with social distancing on Sterns Wharf. I could also say that the beaches have, in general, been fairly, the behavior's been fairly, fairly good. There has been some groups that led better, nothing related to fishing, more related to just kind of hanging out and being there. Typically, the types of boats that are launched at the launch ramp aren't capable of being launched at the beach, so I don't necessarily see that as an issue. And then just to address Councilmember Jordan's, I kind of agree for a one-off case, launching of a boat does not inherently put people in close quarters, but it's really this concern with overwhelming volume. Even last weekend, we saw our parking lots and launch ramps kind of at 90 to 95% capacity, and this was before a majority of our neighboring cities also closed their ramps. And so it just creates a lot of issues with parking and queuing and just generally being around that area. So I agree, if there's one person there launching their boat at 6:00 in the morning, that's really not an inherently risky action, but the concept of people coming from far and wide to our boat launch ramp, and we're not a very big facility to support kind of larger regional use of our facilities.
Thank you. Mr. Friedman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Mr. Wiltshire. Just to clarify, I didn't make the motion earlier. I just wanted to continue the discussion from earlier, and I wanted, since we received a lot of public comment on this in emails and in other ways, just wanted the public to understand the decision-making we made today, and I didn't feel we had that earlier. So I agree with Councilmember Harmon that I think we could revisit this after the next couple of weeks, and it might, and it might be something we could do, and perhaps some of our other neighboring jurisdictions will release some of theirs as well. So I'm not going to be making the motion. I just wanted to have that discussion because I didn't feel we had closed that discussion earlier. Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll go ahead and close the discussion about the boat launch. Thank you, everyone. The floor is open for any other comments we heard from the farmer's market representative. We heard from the chief. If there's nothing else, we will go ahead and close this item. It's almost 7:00, and we've been at this a long time. Go ahead, Ms. Sneddon.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a quick question for city attorney about the 5G, and maybe you don't have the answer for it right now, but if there's a way for us to get an update on the status of that.
An update on 5G?
On halting or having a pause on the permits for 5G during the pandemic?
And you're asserting that that's part of our discussion about the coronavirus?
Yes, yes, because the comments were that during the coronavirus pandemic, we had public commentators at the beginning asking the question, so I'm just asking the question of Mr. Cullon, if there's any relation between limiting the permits during this time of the COVID pandemic. If this isn't the right time for that question, I can ask it offline, but it is related to COVID.
I see what you're saying. Go ahead, Mr. Cullon.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mayor Pretem Sneddon, the question comes up because of the public comments that suggested the city council should put a moratorium on wireless installations during the pandemic. The construction activities are generally being treated as essential activities under the governor's orders. The federal law, which would allow a moratorium, would require some connection between the reason for doing the moratorium and the pandemic, and that's simply not here. The correspondence that I've seen expresses a fear that the wireless companies are accelerating their construction work during the pandemic. I'm unaware of any evidence to support that, so I'm not of a mind that the city could lawfully create a wireless antenna moratorium during the pandemic under the current circumstances.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, very good. We'll go ahead and close this item. I need to find my agenda. Ms. Clerk, oh, okay, so council assignment reports. Our activities have been really curtailed because of the pandemic, or they should be. A lot of our meetings have been canceled. Does any council member want to report activities? Go ahead, Ms. Sneddon.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just really quickly, we did still have our Kachuma Conservation Release Board meeting via teleconference and looking at budgets into the next year and working on alternate proposals for the trout and for our water usage. But just business as usual, just on teleconference. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Friedman?
I don't have any reports, but I do want to keep some sense of normalcy in this very odd thing. So I will say, while we are doing this from our offices, I am reminded of Pink Floyd's famous song, "I Wish You Were Here."
Thank you. Nice. Okay. Mr. Gutierrez, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Sorry. I just want to give my respects to Charlie Franco's family. He was a neighbor on the West Side. He was a Vietnam veteran, and he passed away in hospice just a few days ago. And we didn't always agree politically, but he was a big supporter of the city and the West Side and of me and of you, Madam Mayor, and I just want to say that he's going to be missed in much respect. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go ahead and close our council assignment reports and go to Mr. Cullon talking about our closed sessions.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Should we have the clerk read them?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I would ask your indulgence in rescheduling them one week. Given the hour and the importance of them, I would prefer to do that if it's okay with you.
It's really okay with me. Thank you. I don't see any other objection from our esteemed colleagues. Thank you. So I would like to adjourn this meeting, though, with the greatest sorrow in memory of the people who have lost their lives in the COVID-19 pandemic here, our neighbors in our county, our region, the world. And stay safe, everyone. Stay tuned in to the news, but not to the point where it's dampening your spirits. And contact the city, me, any other council members as you need information. And if there's no other business, we'll adjourn this meeting. Thank you.